City Council work session to order this evening, being the sixteenth of August two thousand and twenty-one. I welcome those that are on the line and those that are participating. This is a marathon evening for the city council. We have scheduled three hours for our discussion this evening. There's three items that we're going to be going over. And so to start out, we're going to talk first about the consolidation update of the fire district. And Chief Lippert has sent to us a staff report. And with that, we know that Sheldon Gilbert is with us tonight. They have finished their consultant report, and so Sheldon will be running the council through that discussion. This evening, we have slides that he's going to be using that was a part of our package. So Sheldon, again, we welcome you here this evening. You've been before us a number of times, and this is the evening that we've been waiting for kind of the conclusion of all the hard work you and your team has done. So Sheldon, we'll turn the time over to you and go from there. Welcome.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Honorable council members, it's an honor to be here with you. And we are excited to be able to present to you the latest results and findings from a number of reports that we've done on your behalf as it relates to the formation, the feasibility of formation of a consolidated fire district in the northern Yamhill County area. I would like to say it's the last analysis, but I think we probably are in store for one more once we have a final commitment as to who's moving forward. Because we still are waiting for all the districts and/or municipalities to give us the we're in with both feet or push away and say we're gonna sit this out. So what I have been asking and the ask that I'm making for all the presentations is that they get back to the chief or I and let us know if they are committed to moving forward so that we can do a final analysis, because we went ahead and analyzed three models. But the participants in those models haven't affirmed that they are all in. So that's what we're hoping to get out of this. We have made a number of presentations so far. We talked to New Carlton, Dundee, and Dayton, and those all went well. We're talking to you tonight, and then we have the remaining municipality and districts tomorrow. So I'm looking forward to hearing your thoughts and discussing this with you. So as you know, we are down to a final group of departments from the initial cooperative service study, which also included the southern departments, South Polk and others that were working on a subsequent consolidation effort, which was our recommendation. And we recommended that the northern departments here take a look at what the feasibility is for you all to form a district. And so we're down to Dundee, McMinnville, McMinnville Rural, Dayton, New Carlton, Amity, and Lafayette, and Dundee Rural too. So those are the departments that are left in the study. We presented the first graphic up there, which was the cooperative service study right around the first of the year. We have subsequently finished some extensive cost modeling and a standards of cover study, which is seventy-five percent complete. And the only reason it's not completed as a whole is we are still waiting for some updated data from Dundee and their dispatch center. So we weren't able to finish it. But we do believe we've got a good direction and a good amount of analysis with some recommended actions moving forward that I think will satisfy your need for determining how and when you move forward. And then the last thing is that we facilitated Mike Tucker. I took a short hiatus, probably the world's shortest retirement for a couple of months. And Mike Tucker came and did an implementation planning session for the different stakeholders, and we have that work. And now I am back in the saddle and will be seeing this process to completion with you all. So that's a little bit about where we were and where we're at. What we have done through these different aspects of this study is we assessed the current fiscal service levels and infrastructure of each agency. We provided side-by-side comparison of the existing services and processes, and we forecasted to the best of our ability five years out what that might look like. We've taken, we've conducted three evaluations, three scenarios. One is what we call a base evaluation and two optional scenarios. And that is based on everybody participating and then two subsets participating. And I'll go over those specifics on the next slide or slides. Then we analyze these options and alternatives to evaluate the potential and the opportunity for success. And I believe we've got enough to present you tonight that I think will help you determine a direction for your city. So the base, this is the key, when I say key, a key as in, these are the three scenarios. You've got your base district scenario, which includes everyone, Amity Fire District, New Carlton Fire District, Dayton Fire District, Dundee Fire District, City of Dundee, Lafayette Fire Department, McMinnville City, and McMinnville Rural Fire District. That is the base scenario. When I talk about the base scenarios, that's what I'm referring to. I'm glad that you have a copy of the slides, because you can reference back to these, and you'll know which one I'm talking about. Scenario one throughout the presentation is just yourselves, the McMinnville, McMinnville, I can't say it, McMinnville Rural Fire District and the Amity Fire District. If the three of you decided to move forward, we analyzed that and modeled that operationally and financially. And then scenario two is those three jurisdictions along with New Carlton and Lafayette. So those are the three scenarios that we have analyzed, both financially and operationally. That's not to say that what we will come up with will be some subset of all of these, but these are the three that we felt had some potential to at least give you a perspective on, so we did so. And that was in consultation with your chief. Yes, sir?
You keep referring to New Carlton Fire District. Is that a specific new district or?
Yeah, that is a great question, and I actually asked it when I got here, when we presented to them. It is in fact the name of their new district, which I guess was reconstituted after the dissolution of the Carlton Fire District.
So they named their district the New Carlton Fire District?
Not to be confused with the old Carlton Fire District, is my understanding.
Thank you for that bit of history. I appreciate it. Sorry for interrupting.
I had to learn that myself, so good question. So that's, those are the three scenarios that we attempted to model. So let's talk about the financial analysis of the base option. The base option is all the districts and municipalities participating. It is based on your two thousand and twenty-one approved or submitted revenue and expenditures that were given to us when we got them. So if there was any changes subsequent to them being given to us several months back, then that wouldn't be included in here. But this gives us a bird's eye view. This includes all revenue, all expenditures, all capital revenue, and all capital expenditures. Just about every jurisdiction has some form of debt or bonds that they've sold to fund capital in some fashion, and that's all included there along with the payments. And we went ahead and modeled it at two cases. The base case was one point five mils per one thousand value, and we modeled it from twenty-one through twenty-six for a base year plus five. And you can see that at one point five mils in two thousand and twenty-one, there was a pretty significant deficit. And the reason behind that was because there was a significant amount of capital paid out, which was one-time money. And I believe a big portion of that, there was Lafayette, and I believe it's their new fire station, for two point six million. And then there was a number of other payments made for equipment, ranging in about one point two million. And so all the one-time money that was paid out took it well beyond the revenue that was collected, because it'd been collected in the past for that. The following year, where they didn't have as much one-time capital payment, you can see that you went positive. And then you break even in year three, in year four, and five, and six. You begin to go in the red at one point five mils, basically displaying that that is not enough. You can see that you're maintaining a reasonable reserve. Under Gatsby standards for fire districts, twenty percent is the target, and in most cases, you are able to exceed that. Optional case two is the same model using two mils per one thousand. And you probably can't see where I'm pointing, but I'm pointing at the lines up at the top where you can see that your revenue is, there you go. The total revenue is the dark blue line, and the expenses are I'm having a hard time with the colors on the screen there, but it's the other blue line. One of them is light, one of them is dark. So you can see that in this case, your revenue is exceeding your expenses, and you basically catch up and break even. And in year six, you go just a little bit in the red. Now, just a little bit about these modeling and assumptions, because this is a little bit of a lot of predictive analysis here. So here's the assumptions that we made. For every year of your assessed value, within all the jurisdictions, we increased them by four percent, because that was the average increase that we saw over the period of five to seven years prior. The reality is, over the last three years, your assessed value has been going up closer to seven to ten. So if you change that, this looks a lot better, but we were pretty conservative in our revenue increases as it relates to your assessed value. As far as your expenditures go, the assumption is on all of the scenarios that your supplies and services and general materials went up three percent a year, compounding each year. And your personnel and personnel costs, benefit costs, total package costs went up six percent a year. So you have a total of nine percent compounding each year. If those costs come in less, you look better. If those costs come in more, you look worse. But we were pretty aggressive in our expenditures and a little conservative in our revenue, just because I don't, if anything, I want these models to, I don't want them to overpromise. And so that's a little bit about the models, and the other two will follow suit. But that's what it looks like for the base case scenario if all the districts came in. But at two mils, you would in fact be able to maintain your department and add a significant amount of personnel, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. On the one point five, even though you go in the red because of your reserves, you could still add up to ten bodies over five years. But not as much, and obviously, that's not trending the right way. Scenario number one is just McMinnville, McMinnville Rural District and Amity. If you guys were to come together at one point five, it works. You can see that you start out in the negative in year one, but that you go in the positive in the following years and break even in year six. And the assumptions are the same, three percent increase compounded annually for supplies and services, and six percent for personnel and benefit and human resource costs. So that particular model puts you up in an available fund balance that goes up to almost three point seven million at the end of it. So that looks a lot better. Model number three, or two, excuse me, which is the third model, is those three jurisdictions along with Lafayette and New Carlton. And you can see in this particular model, it also comes pretty close at one point five mils to break even. However, in both of those scenarios, that pretty much assumes status quo and doesn't give you much opportunity to add resources, which, when we talk a little bit later about your operational service delivery capabilities, you're going to see that there is a significant need for you to add some resources throughout this new district under any of the scenarios. So that gives you kind of a baseline view of what the model does at one point five. And so you can see that two being the high, one point five being the base, and what they look like collectively. What does that mean as far as FTEs and being able to add bodies? Because you're going to find that when we did the operational analysis, which we'll talk about in detail, you have some deficits as it relates to assembling what we call an effective response force, meaning getting the right amount of firefighting personnel on the scene of a complex incident so they can do critical tasks in a timely manner to mitigate the incident and reduce fire loss and loss of life, as well as increase safety of your fire personnel. You can see that at the base model, at one point five, over that five-year period plus the base year, you could add ten bodies, and if you were to do it at one point eight, which is a little bit below the two that you saw, we figured that you could maintain your, not your revenue, your reserves and add twenty-eight bodies, not at once, over the course of those six years. At scenario one, which was just the three of you, the three jurisdictions, at one point eight, which is over the one point five, you could add twenty bodies. And at scenario two, which added Lafayette and New Carlton, you could add fifteen bodies. So that's going to be important when we talk about moving some of your service levels and capabilities a little bit higher. But that gives you a general idea of what the mil rate buys for you as far as personnel for the different scenarios. I think I would also say at this point, when I talk about FTEs over a five-year period full-time equivalents, that's based on the McMinnville total package of a firefighter. But I don't think it only means that you would spend this money on full-time fire personnel. I think that the district should look for opportunities to leverage a portion of this money for volunteer incentive programs, to get a sleeper program, or stipend program, or different types of educational programs that will allow you to staff with volunteers or part-paid or folks getting a stipend that would be much less expensive, that can augment the full-time staff, which you'll need some of also. And this is mostly in the areas that have volunteer staffing now. So I don't necessarily think that that works downtown here, but it certainly would work in some of the more rural stations. So that's just something to consider as we walk through the different elements of the presentation. So when we did the operational evaluation, which we call a standard of cover, we basically took a look at your risk profile and your capabilities and standards that apply to combination or professional fire departments, and what's the gap? And here's what we discovered in general global observations. Each agency has made significant efforts to meet the service delivery needs of the community served. All of you have done creative and innovative things in different ways to try to maximize participation, to ensure you have as much staffing as you can. Everyone's to be commended. Nobody's not trying to meet the needs of the community. Secondly, there are very distinctive risk and response attributes that cover urban areas, suburban areas, rural areas, and wilderness response elements. You'll find this in the recommendations, so I'll describe to you real quickly what that means. For the most part, when you do any sort of standard of cover, people create calls. Where there's no people, there are very few calls. Where there's lots of people, you get calls. So an urban area, under the National Fire Protection Association standard, is anywhere that you have over twenty-five hundred people per square mile. Suburban would be a thousand per square mile. Rural would be five hundred per square mile, and wilderness would be less than two hundred and fifty persons per square mile. And the reason that you break your response zones, which we'll talk about in a little bit into those segments, is you cannot, no one could afford, nor would you want to afford, a one-size-fits-all response standard. There has to be an understanding that if I move across the street, I'm going to get a more robust response than if I move fifteen miles out of town. That's just a fact. And so by breaking these up and having response goals for each of those types of areas, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, it's a very fundamentally sound way to measure how your fire department is performing, and it's in conjunction, and it's aligned with the risk and the frequency of the calls. Calls happen where people are at. The number one place for calls in this new district is going to be the city of McMinnville, with a little bit of Dundee and some others having some hotspots also. So that's that.
Sheldon?
Yes, sir?
Could you go over those numbers again for urban? It was twenty-five hundred?
Per square mile. Suburban was one thousand per square mile. Rural was five hundred per square mile, and wilderness was two hundred and fifty per square mile. And I'll confirm those numbers. I did that from memory, but I'm pretty sure that's right.
Thank you.
Yep. Those are populations, and we do population heat maps that allow us to know what that is. There is significant variation in the level of capabilities and resources within the participating agencies. As to be expected, the level of training and the frequency of calls and the ability to hone skills is always greater in those that are doing it full-time and running lots of them versus those who are doing it part-time or as volunteers and run a few calls a month. Same with the capabilities, the type of equipment that you have, the capabilities of that equipment. It does vary, and that needs to be taken into account as you build the service delivery model. All that being said, there is significant potential for standardization, enhanced coordination, and increased capabilities through a unified fire district. So there is a lot of benefit, I believe, for everyone if they choose to participate. For some, it's going to be a significant increase in cost over what they're paying now, but the capabilities that will exist within the district will far exceed the capabilities they have on their own and having to depend on mutual aid from the other jurisdictions. So we'll see how that all plays out and who feels that they can sell that as part of the package. But that is our observation. So I wanted to spend a couple of minutes with you and talk about why do we need a quick response? And why do you need fifteen to seventeen people on the scene of a fire, you know, within ten minutes? And those are absolutely great questions that drive policies that you have to approve. So I wanted to go over it for a few minutes, and I have some visuals here. And so I'll point with the pointer you can't see, and maybe somebody can follow me with a mouse. But let's look up here in the left-hand corner, and you're going to see here that there's this red arrow here that's the temperature, and the blue arrow down here is your time, and this line is indicative of your fire growth, okay? So when a fire starts, it's what's called an incipient phase. So if I gave you an example, if there was a fire that started in this room in the corner in a garbage can, that would be the incipient phase. That's down here at the bottom of this arc. As time marches on, that fire grows to a point where it can get this whole room up to a thousand degrees. And once this room hits an excess of a thousand degrees, it flashes over, and now this whole building is fully involved. Now we went from a room and contents fire to a major structure fire involving the whole building. And so that can happen in some instances in a two thousand square foot home. In seven to ten minutes, it gets out of the room into the house and starts expanding. Whoops, and I hit the wrong button, sorry. And during that time, we have to detect it. Somebody needs to see it and call nine-one-one. Someone needs to report it. The dispatcher needs to put it out. The firehouse needs to get their turnouts on and get out. And then they need to get on the scene, and they need to start setting up supply lines and pulling hose lines and throwing ladders and getting a rescue crew and getting a RIC crew for their own rescue if needed. They have to do all that, and we're trying to interrupt that fire growth in that ten-minute to fifteen-minute range is really where you need to be. Seven to ten in a small room, but ten to fifteen is really where you need to be for sure. How fast does fire spread now versus back in the day? This is a legacy timeline of what the different types of testing for fire spread looks like. And back in the day, the time that the fire starts in that incipient phase to where you start getting structural collapse on full- timber-type homes and full-dimensional lumber with very little synthetic materials is about forty-five to fifty minutes. So you can go safely into that environment and put that fire out without risk of collapse. Or if you go up on a roof to cut a hole in the roof to let the heat out, you've got thirty, forty minutes. If you get into modern construction, and I'm going to say anything from the eighties till now probably qualifies. Number one, we have houses full of synthetics, full of polymers and plastics that burn toxically and burn very fast. And we have new lumber that is lower dimension, smaller dimension. It's truss construction. They don't nail it or bolt it anymore. They put little gangnails in it. They do different types of things that can fail in thirty minutes. So we've essentially cut our time in half to get in and out of a structure safely so we don't fall through the floor, fall through the roof, or have the roof fall on us. And so that is why that initial fire attack and getting that first unit there and the right amount of people there in that ten-to-fifteen-minute range is so important, especially in newer construction, which are your apartments and different types of multifamily-type structures. So that's the fire side of things. And that's why we need to have these response times in that ten-to-fifteen-minute range at the latest for an effective response force. We want that first unit there in that seven-to-ten-minute range so we can get one hose line on this and hopefully get it while it's small. Subsequently, the other issue that we deal with is medicals. You're going to see in a few minutes that about eighty percent of what you do are medical calls. And I would like you to just take a look at this cliff dive here. This is the survival rate from cardiac arrest that goes from one minute down to about ten minutes. If you can find somebody, or you have witnessed somebody who collapses, and you can defibrillate that heart from a place of fibrillation, shaking, into a viable rhythm pumping, you can shock him in ninety-five percent of the time. It goes down, and I can't see the numbers, I'm too old, but it goes down exponentially to eighty, sixty, twenty, or forty, thirty, twenty, ten, and so forth. So conveniently enough, the medical timeline for physiological irreversible damage due to circulation or not breathing and the growth of a fire all converge around that six-to-ten-minute range. That's why we want to get a unit there where lots of calls occur within that six-to-ten-minute range. In addition to that, when it is a fire, you want to make sure you have fifteen to seventeen people there, because not only do you have to pull a hose line, somebody's got to get a water supply in case you exceed tank water. Somebody's got to get a crew of two or three together to go search the house to see if there's occupants. You got to get two people up or three people up on the roof to cut a hole in it to let the heat and smoke out so the search crew can see what they're doing. You need to have a rapid intervention team if something heaven forbids go wrong that can go in for safety purposes. And you need an incident commander so somebody's watching the whole scene and is accounting for everybody and what's going on with the control objectives. So that's why this whole thing is a bit of a choreographed dance that we all base on time. So I wanted to spend a minute on that with you and just make sure you understood that and see if you had any questions on this before we go in and start looking at your actual performance. I hope that made sense.
I don't see any questions at this point, Sheldon?
Great. So that all being said, what is the performance that's occurring within the district? Now, please be advised that I've got probably a two-hundred-page standard of cover report, another seventy pages of financial analysis, and I'm trying to keep this presentation reasonable. So we're going to do some high-level review of some of the general findings, but there's a lot of other information you'll eventually get when we get Dundee's information and get that report to you. But this will give you a general idea that the total response time, from the time, what's your emergency, to somebody in a red fire engine or ambulance shows up in your house, the first unit, ninety percent of the time, not the average, ninety percent of the time, which ensures consistent reliability for the whole base district, should you do that, is twelve minutes and nineteen seconds. For a fire, it's thirteen minutes, nine seconds. And if you wonder, why is it longer for a fire than for the medical? Because it takes them about an extra forty seconds to get their personal protective equipment on at the station. So that's usually why you see a little more time there. Your EMS calls are running at about twelve oh five, and then all the rest are going down from the hazardous conditions and concealed good-intent calls, sometimes don't even go lights and sirens, so we don't worry too much about those. But that's if you did the whole district. If you move over to scenario one, which I can't see, because I've got the zoom, there, you go, thank you, ma'am. You can see that if it's just McMinnville, McMinnville Rural, and Amity, you drop eleven minutes, eight seconds ninety percent of the time. It's a significant drop. Why is that? That's because you've tightened the circle and all the calls happen here. And you get good response times here because your fire station is where the calls occur. You lose a lot of that rural and wilderness response. That's also why, as you move forward in the future with whatever your district looks like, having those emergency response zones is important. So we're not overlaying all the data. We're looking at what is the urban suburban area doing? What is the rural wilderness area doing? And it just tends to translate a lot better. But that's what we're looking at from the whole participatory number. Yes, sir?
Looks like Sal has a question. Sheldon, go ahead, Sal.
Yeah, Sheldon, I just want to, thank you, Mayor. Sheldon, I just wanted to confirm that you said that the smaller district, the scenario one, in addition to having a smaller service area, had the potential for hiring up more staff than the other scenarios because the outlawing districts that you were looking at in the more northern areas were carrying more debt. Is that right?
That's probably one of the major factors. Yeah, it just tightens up the finances and it tightens up the response area. And you've got resources in a tighter area where the calls are occurring, so it's a common issue.
Just to confirm, just to confirm, your analysis was the smaller area allows for a smaller area and also for more staff, more actual staff?
Well, at one point five, yes. At one point five, yes. And even at two, it would be more than the base, because, yes, it would.
Thank you.
Because the costs are higher. And also, in the base, which has the other districts you just talked about or referenced, some of them have staff, like Dundee has staff that are there, you know, eight hours a day. And so there's some paid staff. There's a paid chief in Dayton that's on duty. So there's a number of paid staff that are in that larger scenario that aren't in the smaller scenario. Yes, sir?
Counselor Garvin has a question. Go ahead, Adam.
Sheldon, just to build on Sal's question and kind of touch on the different types of service areas, do any of these account for different mileage rates for, you know, what might be considered rural? I guess maybe we might even have some wilderness-type coverage, just some of these other districts possibly coming in. But is everybody in these models all paying the same mileage rate? And you don't have like ninety percent paying suburban and ten percent paying a rural or wilderness?
Right. No, correct. Everybody pays the same mileage rate. The base rate would be approved as part of the election, and everybody pays the same amount. Obviously, there's more assessed value in McMinnville than there is in Amity. Obviously, there's more assessed value in McMinnville than there is in Amity, but they're all going to pay the one point five or the two point oh or whatever you decide on when we get to the place where you decide what you're going to do. The only reason that those different zones would come into play is to report performance and response capabilities because they would vary. So that's all it would do, it would not have, wouldn't have anything to do with the the mill rate that people are paying for the district. Okay? And then scenario two um is kind of in the middle, it goes up a little bit, but it's eleven fifty-four, twelve thirty-five and and so on. So, so that gives you an idea of the, of the ninety percentile response time. Now, it was already brought up, oh my gosh, that EMS response is too long for our ambulance service area. That is an average that you're required to hit, not a ninety percentile fractile and this is only for the first third unit and it's not counting just ambulances, it's counting everybody who responds. The minute you stop the clock that somebody's on scene. So this has nothing to do with your ambulance service area, so if anyone has any concerns about that, this, this isn't that. What kind of calls are you running? So in all three models, you are very similar. Uh, you're running at seventy-eight, almost eighty percent medicals in the base model and about four point one percent structure fires or or wildland fires. Um, and the rest are uh reasonably non-consequential, but different types of calls, miscellaneous calls. That is a pretty standard bell curve for a suburban uh area, um, and that's what most people run. Uh, we don't start worrying about fire percentages unless you get up above seven percent, give or take. Um, four percent, three to four percent, three to five percent in an urbanized area is probably indicative of some older construction in parts of the district, but overall um is not what I would call a fire problem. So that's good. But it is enough fire activity that you do need a fire department and you definitely need to be able to assemble that effective response force to contain these fires at their smallest point. If you came in just the three districts that we, or the two districts in yourself, you can see that it's uh eighty-one percent medical, so there's a little more fire, a little more medical and a little less fire. And like I've said, that is probably indicative of a, a newer construction that you see in the central area here rather than in some of the uh other areas that are older. Um, and there's more of it and so n- new construction tends to burn less because it's built up to code and m- much of it is protected by sprinkler and detection systems. So that would account for maybe the, you know, point eight percent. And then if you were to add in um the other two districts in scenario two, uh you, you pretty much travel very close to scenario one, three point seven versus three point four. And I can't see the bottom percentage, but it's, I think it's right at eighty-one or eighty-two.
Yeah, eighty point, eh eh eighty point three.
Eighty point three, there you go. So um background noise, not statistically valid changes, uh but you can see where it tightens up a little bit uh on the number of fires as you get into the communities that have stronger uh newer construction and fire protection uh measures. Okay, so this is a busy slide, so I'll, I'll walk through it and and really what we want to focus on is at the top. So the, one of the things we wanted to do is we wanted to plot every call that happened over a two-year period in all three scenarios and try to determine how many times, how, how often you could get there within four minutes drive time. This means this isn't including nine one one, what's your emergency? This isn't including toning down the station, this isn't including waiting for volunteers to show up. This is once you're in the unit and you say we're en route and you, you release the brakes and you drive till you get in front of the incident, what's your uh, what's your response time? And basically what you want to look at is that the, the red and the green um are all good, they're, they're four minutes, um, the, the beige isn't good. Um, and you can see up here that in, in the McMinnville area, there's, there's a lot of beige, but there's a ton of red underneath it. So I wouldn't get too concerned, you do not have an inordinate amount of long responses, but this does tell you that you have a degree of responses that are, that are longer than, than the eight to ten minute travel time and that's because your units are probably busy and your reliability is suffering. And we'll talk more about that in a minute. But in any case, you're getting to the calls in the whole district, four minutes or less, sixty-seven percent of the time. If you tighten the district down, it just uh goes uh just a li- a little bit less, sixty-seven point one eight, and then it goes to sixty-seven point five seven. The reason it goes down here a little bit is because you guys are in the center of the hub and we're going to talk about this in a minute, but you've got some reliability issues with some of your units being really, really busy. And so that's, that's just for the first two units. Um, we would love to see these numbers, if we could build a perfect system, we want to see these numbers get up around closer to seventy-five, eighty percent. May not be able to get there, just depends on the, on the, on the resource availability and the number of calls. Um, but this is, this is not bad because this is four minutes. Remember, if we write a, a, a potential goal for you to hit, it won't be four minutes drive time, it'll probably be closer to, to six minutes and it'll go way up in that eighty percentile. But we wanted to at least show you at the national standard drive time, you're not doing terrible. You're not doing terrible. And it's statistical background noise between the three scenarios. Here's where you got a problem.
Sheldon, uh, Adam has another question, go ahead, Adam.
Sheldon, is that four minutes uh drive time, is that just any unit on scene like command unit or is that an actual staff unit on scene?
Um, it could be a command unit, but the vast majority of them are going to be engine, truck or ambulance.
Okay, thank you.
But, but we, we logged the first unit on scene, so in an instance where your battalion chief or your com- battalion commander was there first, it would capture it. But that, that's a very small percentage of the time. So here's, here's where you have some challenges. Um, so this is what we call an effective response force map that is very busy and hard to read, but I gave you what you need to know up top and that is, how long does it take you or how often can you get fifteen to seventeen responders on the scene of a fire? A first response, a first alarm assignment in fourteen minutes? As, as I told you, that's about half the time to collapse, but that, that is probably a reasonable time as for the district as a whole. You'll do better here in the city to some degree, but you don't have enough personnel to hit it. But the fifteen to seventeen is the national standard for a two thousand square foot structure that is involved in fire to perform all those critical tasks I went over with you a few minutes ago. In the base ma- map and the base model, you're only getting there forty percent of the time in fourteen minutes with fifteen to seventeen people. In scenario one, it tightens up significantly, once again, you have most of your fires in your area in the center where people are at and you can tend to get there quicker, but it's still only fifty-seven point six. Remember, when we talk about fractile response times, we want to get to the ninety percent for the goal. And then scenario two, you're at fifty-three and as you can tell, as the, as the district broadens, the percentage drops because you're going farther out for some of these fires and there is less staffing as you leave the center of town. So that is something to be um addressed. And what we chose to do is we did not come up with initial recommendations to add a bunch of stations. Our approach and our recommendation is staff the ones you have better and strategically and see if you can get this number better as well as your other number. Now, we will include a station optimization map in the, in the propos- in the study that basically says if we had started over and ma- wave our magic wand, where could we optimize our station locations in this district? And you'll have be, the able, ability to see. Um, but we weren't seeing any major hotspots where your stations aren't. So when you need a new station immediately is when you got a big grouping of calls where you're not. That's not the case. You just can't, you're busy and you don't have enough people and you can't get enough people there for an effective response force. That's what we were finding with these models. So let's look at unit hour utilization. So this talks about the system reliability and why so many of those dots were beige. When we talk about system reliability, we, 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 our ears go up at twenty percent. When a u- units used more than twenty-five percent of the time and it's a cross role dual uh function unit, meaning they fight fire as well as do EMS, twenty-five percent is a stress system and and thirty percent, we called out the line in the sand where you gotta have something in place before you hit that. If you look at all the units in the study, you're going to see that for nineteen and twenty, uh, the ambulances, of course, have the greatest utilization and we're in the eighteen to nineteen percent realm. The rest of the units throughout the whole system do not have a utilization problem, meaning they're not busy so much at the time that they're not available. It's mo- mainly your ambulances and even, and your engine one is, is probably the most busy and that's about what, nine, nine percent in twenty nineteen, eight percent in twenty twenty, a difference of point four, six percent. Let us also remember that twenty twenty was an anomaly year. Hopefully, we're not repeating it again in twenty twenty-one, but call volumes were generally down because people were in place and weren't moving. Um, what we did is we looked at the twenty twenty-one calls year to date and we saw a, a flag. Um, and that has to do with your ambulances only, your engines and your trucks still have capacity, but medic twelve is at twenty-seven percent in twenty twenty-one, medic one's at nineteen, medic ten's at nineteen and some change. So we would automatically say, and we did not, as part of this study, we were not um supposed to do anything with the ambulance service area. That is a, that is a contract given to you by the county and something that has its own response criteria, but from a, from a utilization, because we also respond them on fires, we care about their availability and their ability to get to calls for that first duty apparatus. And so medic twelve needs to be addressed as soon as possible and we need to put a watch on nineteen and uh on one and ten. Um, and if you choose to add another unit, it should take some pressure out of the balloon on all three. But um you guys are at a place where your three units are, are, are going to be stressed and one of them's hitting criticality as far as effectiveness and burnout and safety. So, so that's um, that's something you need to watch, that's what came out of the utilization or the reliability study. So here's our overall recommendations and then we'll give you some specific recommendations for each scenario. So overall, we think it's really important that when you form this new district, you create an urban, suburban, rural and wilderness ERZ means emergency response zone. And within each of those zones, you'll have separate response goals that you'll measure against and all of your dispatch calls will have the designator for that zone so that when we do these analysis in the future or when you do these analysis in the future, you're not just looking at the district as a whole and saying, look, our response time's fifteen minutes. Well, when you cover six hundred square miles or whatever it is, yeah, you're going to get that. But we really want to understand what's happening in the urban suburban area and what's happening in the rural and the wilderness area? And are they uh aligning with the risk in those areas and the resources that can be afforded in those areas because there's only so much assessed value to put money into the system? Um, and there's also unique needs out in those areas such as different types of water supply and and tankers and different things like that. So we want to see you or we recommend you break this up a little bit for future analysis uh because this uh the, the way we had to do this because all your data's aggregated doesn't necessarily tell the story as well as it could if you do this. So after you establish those zones, you want to make sure you set goals for each of those zones. We're going to actually run some modeling and give you some, uh, I'm, I'm going to call them samples of goals you could take a look at that would be achievable or that you should shoot for based on what you have and what you're going to do moving forward with a new district. Uh, you definitely need to enhance your twenty-four seven coverage with paid staff and/or volunteer incentive programs, I talked a little bit about that up front, so that you can get more people to that fire and more uh get that first unit in and some of the outskirts a little quicker. You need to work with YCOM, which is your dispatch center for everybody except Dundee and Dundee Earl, um, their stated performance, uh, they were coming in at about two minutes per call for dispatching. I'm not going to tell you there's a, there's a problem there because we weren't tasked with going and finding it out. All we're saying is, is that the national standard should be between a minute and a minute and fifteen seconds for EMD and a tiered response. So something for the chief and the, and the, and the leadership to look at and just see if maybe we're not capturing it correctly, maybe we're, we're seeing the numbers wrong, but um they may want to look at different ways to, to shorten that, uh whether it's a pre-alert and then they slow them down if they, if they EMD it to a lower triage, whatever it is. But the, there's some things you should look at there because that you can control, that'll shorten that response time. And then the other thing is to evaluate your turnout time for the career folks, it's running at about two minutes and the national standard for a medical call is to get out in one minute and on a call where you have to put on your turnouts and your personal protective equipment is a minute and twenty seconds. Um, I did this presentation to your local yesterday, we had a great discussion on it. This does not necessarily slam dunk mean that they're dogging it or they're not doing something right. We always ask you to look at all the impedance factors, are they, are they hitting the button when they're a half a block down and they've been in service for fifteen seconds? Do they have some sort of a workflow issue between the time the tone goes off and they get in the rig? I've been to departments where you got three or four people going to look at a map when only the driver needs to look at a map and the others need to get on the rig. So there's just a, there's a plethora of things you can look at as you uh, as you take a look and evaluate this on the technology, the workflow and then of course the performance of your personnel. They were all, all good on taking a look at it. Um, they don't feel it, it's two minutes and they're probably right, but this comes up in just about every jurisdiction we do, so you're not, you're not unique in that aspect. So that's our overall general recommendations. As far as staffing to get that ERF uh in the different scenarios, uh, we are recommending that uh obviously it's not going to happen day one, but over the period of the five to six years if at all possible, uh, we would recommend that you staff your truck company with three personnel here at station one, that you staff a Lafayette engine, staff Amity engine five and staff Dundee engine to twenty-four seven instead of just eight hours a day. Our modeling and our arc view um scenarios showed that this gives you the greatest bang for your buck to increase first response to all the areas where calls are occurring and for units to converge to get that effective response force. For instance, obviously the McMinnville truck, the Amity engine five and the uh Dundee engine would be a great asset into Dayton. Um, you know, you, a little Lafayette engine coming into your jurisdiction, Amity coming into your jurisdiction, there's, there's a lot of things that if they were staffed and you're not waiting for volunteers on that initial response for that, at least trying to get that somewhere between fourteen and seventeen people on site within that ten to fifteen minutes, this would help you immensely. So that would be a, a recommendation for those. If you do the scenario where it's just yourself, Amity in the rural district, we would still recommend you over the first five years, staff the truck company and staff an engine at station uh five in the Amity district and that would give you enhanced ERF as well as enhanced first response. And then if you were to go with scenario two, which throws in um New Carlton and Lafayette, um, the truck is, is a centerpiece for this effective response force. That truck company does invaluable things on complex calls, whether it be heavy rescue, extrication, ventilation, securing utilities, securing stairwells, all the different things, doing searches, they do a lot of things that are critical tasks in those complex calls. And then staffing the Amity and then in that case, the model showed moving the engine to New Carlton would probably give you the biggest bang for your buck and that also has great value rolling into town here for you all. So, so that's um, that's kind of where we would recommend you staff. We would not recommend two-person companies if at all possible, you should try to make them three. However, I'll reiterate that that doesn't necessarily mean it's all paid staff, full-time staff. Uh, I would encourage you to look at one or two full-time staff per company, driver, operator, company officer type and then try to fill the firefighter position through uh and it's in, in the, in the outlying stations, not so much here, I think this is going to be career, but in the outlying stations, try to get some volunteers through a sleeper program, through a stipend program, through some sort of an educational incentive program, there's a lot of them out there. Uh, we'll, we'll offer some suggestions in the report, but uh, and a lot of the, a lot of jurisdictions are already looking at these kind of things and see if you can get that third firefighter and leverage some of those dollars so the district would apply some money towards it, but you could get a lot more bodies than for the, for the price of one full-time equivalent. So that's um, that's kind of how we're seeing this play out and, and what we're recommending um for you under those three scenarios. And then the, the, the next thing is you guys already conducted a strategic planning workshop and you came up with seven very important, good initiatives with goals and objectives that have essentially been put together and been vetted by the chiefs and uh we've also have an implementation task book with the two hundred and fifty things you need to do to form a new district, ready to go. Um, once we determine who is in and what you want to do with that group, we can finalize these documents, put these committees together and get you to work fairly quickly. Um, which brings us to what now? Uh, we really need to know who's in and who's out and who's willing to work with who because that's going to drive the financial model that we're going to finally settle on and we can do much more detail and we can bring it down to a more granular level and it's also going to determine which of the operational enhancements we're going to do and those two things together are going to determine your mill rate and your organizational structure, which is going to be the impetus for you guys filing and getting the district going. And that, that would be a matter of us getting everybody together and working through that fairly quickly. So what I've asked everybody is please give us your in or your out by September fifteenth with the intention of starting meetings in late September, early October, so by the end of the year, we have this work done, begin working with legal counsel and you need to, if, if the goal is to go and vote on this in May. And you need to, if, if the goal is to go and vote on this in May, we got to have this thing ready to file in February. So we got to do a lot of work this fall into the first of the year and have this thing pretty much dialed in. I think we're 75% there, but the last 25% is extremely important. And that's where we'll get it down to a granular level where everybody should be very comfortable with the financial and operational assumptions. So that's about 700 pages of reports in 30 minutes or less. Probably was.
Well, Sheldon, you, you've taken a lot of good information and brought it down to a very understandable piece for us to discuss now. So I think what I'll do is just open it up for counsel to ask any clarifying questions. And I think the chief is available to ask any questions of the chief. So we'll just open it up. Anyone on council have any questions for Sheldon or for the chief?
I guess if nobody has questions, I'll, I'll ask a few mayor.
Go ahead Sal.
Thank you. I, I'm having a hard time from a fiduciary standpoint and from a response time standpoint. And in terms of just representing the interests of the city of McMinnville, justifying anything other than the smallest scenario in terms of the district. Because it seems to me that that scenario has the fastest response times, the biggest opportunity to staff up at the least expense. And so I guess my question for Chief Lightford and for Sheldon is, am I missing something obvious in that perspective? Is there, is there a business case or a rational basis for us going with a larger district based on what you just suggested?
I'll, I'll, I'll take a run at it and then I'll let the chief back up or back me off. So if the assumptions that we used are too aggressive or too conservative for the base model, that, that model could look better cost-effective wise and you have a broader footprint. The thing to remember about a district is this is a long-term investment in a long-term solution. And so one question you might want to ask is which of our partners have the potential to bring in assessed value? Which brings, future assessed value that's not here today, that will then support this district in the years to come. An example of that is Dundee has some pretty aggressive potential development that could occur within that district and within the town. That might be a very good partnership for the stability of this district 10, 15 years down the road, even if that AV isn't there today. So that's one type of consideration. The other type of consideration is because we embedded all the debt and all the payments of that debt into that analysis, the parties need to get together and discuss, is that the way you want this to be? Another for instance, let's use a municipality like Dundee who has a bond measure for their fire station. Do we want that in the overall funding structure? Or do you want them to maintain that bond and the district rent the firehouse or refinance it? Or take ownership of it for a buck when it's paid off? I mean, so, so there's a lot of different things you can do and move within there to make it, making the footprint bigger. So if you looked at it today, the smaller footprint does seem to have some efficiencies. But if you look at it long-term, you may lose some opportunities. The other thing is allowing your partners to be at the table while you design it, you only get to do that once. And if somebody wants to come in five years from now, it's kind of a TVF and R approach where here's our, here's our package. And so from a, from a, a good neighbor, good working relationship perspective, working together is not necessarily a bad thing. And then I also told everybody that just because you moved to this next step, doesn't mean you're going to sign on the line at the end. It just means you're going to help us get down to what it might look like. Because you may come up with this and the levy rate that it's, or mill rate it's going to take to make this work under scenario X, you all don't think you can sell, well then we gotta, we gotta refine it. We gotta get it down to where, because if just one jurisdiction rejects it, it's off the table until you do it again. So it's not that the rest get to keep going. So, so there's a lot of art, a lot of science and a lot of relationship building that needs to take place in the middle of this. Chief? Okay, he said I was perfect, just for the record.
But, but again Sheldon, I, I surely appreciate Sal's question that we can grow incrementally. And, and you know, scenario one shows that there is benefit out of the gate. And then, you know, four years down the road, if we, you know, if some of the districts don't have as much debt coming in, that might be a better, a better scenario and, and bring more value to the district.
Yeah, I, I can't dispute that mayor. And, and I can also say that we, we presented to Dayton today, for example, and they said that they'd be a really hard sell for them if we didn't give them some staffing. But our, our modeling didn't show that staffing up there optimizes the rest of the system. So, so there's a lot of different give and takes to it, but.
Okay, Chris, your hand's up next and then following that will be Adam.
Mr. Mayor, one, one quick follow, one quick follow-up on that. As in the case with Lafayette or, or Lafayette in particular on this one, if you're looking at the smaller model, but Lafayette were also included in that. While there is some bond debt associated with the station, having use of a station that improves the response time to the core of the district and not having to build a new one is, is also something that has to be taken into consideration.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, Chris?
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, Zach Gary actually had his hand up first. And then if I could, I would still like to, and I would like to yield not only to him first, but also to Adam, since his expertise is above mine, he may hit my questions, I may not have to ask them.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chris. Zach, your, your hand's up, but it's covered by something up on your bookcase that's brown. So it's always hard for me to see. So go ahead.
They let me choose, they let me choose a color and it was either yellow or that color that the mayor can't see. And I chose that color that the mayor can't see. I, I hope, I can happily come back to these if it's a sort of a end of the discussion thing. Just, it's just in my head. What's, if, if we're on the ballot in May, as you closed your discussion with, that's, and we have to apply by February and once we're on, once we move that forward to the ballot, our staff is neutralized and we're into a different phase. That's a, that's a lot of ground to cover before we hit that run-in. And I just want to take this night to, to get a gut check and say, what, what's the path look like to getting that on there? What is, how are we feeling? I don't think we want to make that lift twice. And so are we, what's the realistic chances we get on the ballot and have everything in order? And who's, who's moving that forward and what does that process look like? And I know that's its own whole sort of planning effort. But in a nutshell, can, can I get a just a gut check update on where we're at on that? And realistically, I know if we've got 25% left, as you alluded to, just around the number of 75%, we've done the last 25% is heavy on the details. But just would love a sort of an update and a path forward and who's working on that.
So Counsel Gary, one thing we wanted to, we've done some preliminary work and, and Amanda and her team have done some research for us in outlining a lot of the legal requirements to move this forward. So some of that work is already occurring as we, as we move forward. Some of the work will occur once we have the individuals identified that want to participate. Some of the work is not reinvented, but you're right, there is some, there is a period of time, once the, once the election ballot information is submitted, we're, we're, we have to have advocates in place, whether it's a PAC or whatever it looks like, in order to start getting the message out and across. And I'll defer to Jeff on, on some of the timing issues. I don't want to, I don't want to try and make believe I know everything about elections. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So one of the things that I would say is that there's no, there's no drop dead until you get to the deadline for the May election. So our recommendation is that we continue to work this issue as if there's the opportunity for a May election. And if we roll into December and January and the, and the, the feeling of the council and the other partners is that May is too soon to make it work, then we'd rather do it once than do it a bunch of times. And so we're moving to try to get you to be able to make a decision at the next possible election. But you've always got the discretion to say, we need to slow this down, we need to do more public engagement. We're not quite ready, there are details we haven't been able to answer. So far, we think we can move the, the project forward and give you that option. But it's not the one and only chance you get. And, and my recommendation would be, we don't have enough information to really know if May is the right time to land on the election. That's just the next one that's, that's, you know, that's logistically possible to get done based on the work that still has to happen. So I don't want you to get too spooked that it's May or nothing. We're going to try to give you the opportunity to say yes or no for May. And if you say no for May, then presumably you'd be saying yes to the following November, as long as their partners don't want to move forward. So some of that can be answered later on this fall. And I think we're fully informed by the strategic planning and implementation work that Sheldon and his team continue to do once the partners who are most interested decide that they're interested in moving forward.
Thank you, Jeff. Did, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess it's just sort of a, I think the other part, and then maybe, I don't know if Garvin would dump his two cents in there too. But just sort of what's the, what's the pulse of the other communities that we've talked to? I've, I've read along in the news register about just sort of, and I've heard data and statistics. But we'd just love to hear sort of what the response has been so far. And, and the other thing I'm juggling is I know that there's a May election and that would be great because that's the next one. And we're moving forward on the district and if we can make it work, great. But I also know sort of that old cheesy saying of goal setting is goal getting. And if we're, if we really want to laser focus on it, we have haste and urgency. And we could sort of push to make that happen versus what, if it happens, it happens. So I'm just trying to also guess where and how much work we have and if it's tough. And if it's shoehorning it in to fail or just to hit the deadline. Or if it's, if it's just really a nose to the grindstone and we're going to make that work because we really need to make it work.
Let's move over to Adam and see if he has any insight into those in the, in the district from his perspective.
Thank you, Mayor. Sheldon, first question would be, why are we waiting 30 days for people to say if they're in or they're out? I mean, we've known that this study's been coming for a long time. Not a huge study to digest, in my opinion. So why not make it September 1st and make the May election that much more realistic by cutting two weeks off the waiting period?
There's nothing magical about September 15th. It's basically a month from, from when we got here and made the presentation. And the thought was to leave enough time for them to have a board meeting and to discuss it with the policymakers so that they could be informed and move forward after they had this information. If the general consensus is that those who are interested can get their authorization by September 1st, that would be wonderful. But that's only a couple of weeks away. And I know, I know that New Carlton, when we met with them, to go back to the other council members' request, they were, they, I, my, my read, they were warm to the concept, they needed to talk to their board. They want to make sure at some point they talk to the community, which I'm sure is all part of the process. So that, that was where they were coming from. Dundee, I spent quite a bit of time, a good amount of time with the Dundee city administrator and then talked with them and this morning. And there seemed to be, I think, legitimate curiosity and interest as to how this might benefit them and work for them. So they're going to discuss it at their next meeting, their next council meeting. The rural district, I think, has a different set of questions. And I think they need to have some discussions between the rural district and the city to kind of determine their path forward. And then we talked to Dayton today and their feelings were pretty strong that if they didn't have some staffing in their district, it would be a tough sell for them. So that's, that's what we've gotten so far. And then tomorrow, we've got Lafayette, Amity and the rural, McMinnville rural.
Okay, so we wait till the 15th of September and then what's the date that you're given for, for having that final study back? Whether it's three partners of scenario one or five partners of a modified base or whatever that is?
We need to have a meeting with those who have stepped forward and haven't pushed away from the table. And we need to have probably a couple of meetings with the work group to talk about some assumptions as it relates to who's in, an organizational structure that makes sense, how you want to generally approach this from a budgetary standpoint. And then which of these service enhancements are going to be most important? And then we can turn around the updated operational and financial modeling probably within two weeks of that. And I believe that then the meeting after that would be, we would present the strategic implementation plan and start on the implementation process from a, all the different things you got to do, which is dealing with legal counsel and start getting the legal I's and T's dotted and crossed.
Okay, next question would be Medic 1, 10 and 12 and especially 12 on, under the utilization percentages that you put up for 2021. Obviously those are probably off the first two quarters of the year, so through June. And Medic 12 being at 27%, being a third party, it sounded like you were recommending we need to do something to alleviate our medic stress load even before district? Is that what I was hearing?
Yeah, I, I think independent of that, because as operating is part of that ambulance assessment or service district, service area, you, you need to get that fourth ambulance underway, probably sooner than later. Because the call volume's not going to be going down, it's going to be increasing. Hopefully, when things open back up and, and things happen, you're going to, you're going to see that continue to go up.
Okay, and that's it for questions for now. I'll have some more after some other people ask, but I'll yield my time for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Let's go over to Chris and then Kelly after Chris.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I apologize for being 10 minutes late and missing the first 10 minutes of this, this evening. So if I ask a question that was covered in that timeframe, my apologies. You gave us three scenarios, I assume we're not enclosed in those three only?
Correct.
Is that an accurate assumption?
That's correct. We, we, we tried to use the Ouija board and come up with three probabilities of three different districts. But it may be some combination or hybrid of all those, absolutely.
Understood. And then I guess I don't really have, I don't want to hit a lot of questions at this point. I don't have a lot of questions at this point because I don't really know who's in, who's out and what we're approving and what we're not approving. But I do want to make a general comment to the question posed by Counselor Peralta. And that is, I do think we want to be careful, having brought everybody to the table in this discussion process, of just looking at dollars as being our only decision-making criteria. I, I understand the importance of looking in that direction. But I, I, you know, the, the good neighbor philosophy, I do think has some great weight. And it's something we need to consider as well as the long-term ramifications. So I, I do think we need to put some weight into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Kelly?
Well, I may be pushing this down the road a little bit faster than anticipated, but I was just pondering the issue of polling and giving us some idea of how the citizens will look at this. Is that quite a ways down the road or are we considering that now as we go and ask people, the different individual cities? Are they going to poll too? It would be really interesting to know how that's working out, if there's two phases or just, I don't really know, but I'd like to know.
Counselor Menke, I want to start with by saying that I asked Sheldon to look at trying to accomplish a May date. So that, the work that's been done and the, and the discussion going on around that election date was driven by my, my request to see if it was possible and we were capable of getting there. So I want to make sure that we, we're all on the same page for that. And I did catch that.
The polling, have you done any?
The polling, the polling is, is a part of the, is not part of a contract we have with ESCI. That would be something independent of, of that, of that contract. And, and I am working on trying to find new pollsters because the ones we used previously have decided they're going to retire. So I'm working on that project as, as we speak.
And how many pollings will we actually do? I mean, are you thinking of this in any kind of phased approach?
I think that's, we're not a pollster company, we don't do that. Although I did stay, I did stay the holiday.
I guess I'm asking Rich and I'm asking Jeff. I'd, I'd like to understand how this is going to work because it's a pretty significant part of the overall.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Counselor Menke. Yeah, I, I, I think that a polling exercise for the partners that are most likely to be engaged in the first round of ballot measures is most important. And so I think we need to at least get that group solidified. You know, if Dundee's not interested now, we wouldn't want to poll Dundee. And, and so just to make sure that we had a fairly solid group of partners, I think that once you have that group of partners and that once you have that group of partners, and once you are, can describe both the, the impact of the service and the cost to those voters is when you poll options. And so that's going to be, in my mind, probably late in the calendar year, or late in this calendar year, or maybe early at next calendar year. But we would want to engage some, a polling company to, to help better inform that. We do want to be sensitive to not polling too many times because folks get tired of it and/or suspicious if it happens too often. And so my sense is that, w- once we get a group of partners, two or three or five or six, or however many they are, Sheldon's group refines the cost and service impacts, then we can talk to a pollster, get their recommendation on when they, when they would recommend polling. And it would also depend on where we feel like we are in terms of the track for the election. I mean, if, if there's still interest in a May election, the sooner you do the polling, the better, because you have a limited amount of time to do the work. If it looks like it's more likely to be a November election, then you maybe have a little bit more time to be a, a little more intentional about the poll. It also gives us a chance to address some of the larger budget issues we're talking about as a city and resolve those issues, or at least have some clear direction from the council on that. So, you know, with all the moving parts, I don't think there's a perfect time in which to poll, but we'd want to rely on the consultant to inform that as well. And we would definitely need the, the next round of work that Sheldon's team's going to do to move that forward.
So am I understanding you, you're basically saying probably just one more polling?
Most likely is one, most likely is one more poll. I mean, partly decide, I mean, you know, what you hear and what you learn from the poll could in fact inform how you want to move forward, both in terms of timing and in terms of scope. And, and so you, you, you find out what moves people to yes or to no, and figure out how you can answer those questions. And, and the results of the poll could help answer the question about when the right election is too.
Thank you, Jeff. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Let's go to Sal, and then Adam. Sal?
Can you hear me? Sorry.
We can now, Sal.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I did just want to respond to Chris's point. I, I do agree that dollars aren't the only criteria we should consider, and of course, we want to be good neighbors. But when I heard, what I heard tonight is that dollars weren't the only factor in going with the smaller district. It's dollars, it's coverage area, it's staffing level, which would be higher under the small district rather than the larger district. So I just, I'm struggling finding a case for it. And then the, the other point I'd make is that, you know, at the $1.50 millage rate, we would be able to continue without pulling money out of our general fund because we're creating this new district, and it would be able to be self-sustaining at that $1.50 rate, which is about what McMinnville residents are paying now. So part of the reason we're in the trouble that we're in is that we have been very generous to our neighbors, and a big part of the shortfall that we're experiencing in firing EMS is that we're not currently recovering the cost of services for services that we're providing outside of the city of McMinnville. So, you know, to the extent that this allows us to get back on a financially stable path where our, you know, residents of McMinnville aren't subsidizing services outside of our area, you know, I think that's all to the good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Chief.
One quick, one quick follow-up to Counselor Peralta's point. The 1.5 does nothing for the service improvements. That just keeps us at status quo with the problems that we're currently facing.
No, I, I understand that, but, but my, but, but we have those problems right now, and we have a million-dollar shortfall on top of it. So, you know, and, and I was using that really as a case in point, Rich, our chief, to, that, you know, this districting, the small district does really solve the financial problem that we are facing, and it does it in a way that allows us to increase the service, you know, staffing levels and, and so on, better than the larger district. And in particular, I think the Dundee district is concerning just because of the size of it and the distance from, you know, the city of McMinnville. And I also, you know, wonder why Dundee didn't participate in the TVFR district, which is, you know, literally right next door.
My understanding on that, sir, was that the TVFNR had some concerns over the urban renewal district, and I, I believe it was them not wanting to come the other way.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then just to reaffirm too, what the chief said, the ability to add FTEs in that slide for that, the scenario one district you're referencing was based on a 1.67 mil rate.
Millage rate?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go to Adam.
Yeah, a couple of questions for Sheldon. The first one being, when you're presenting to these other districts, are they getting a, obviously, the same base scenario, but then in their scenarios, one, one and two is like Dayton getting Dundee and Lafayette? Is there other two partners, or is there a possibility that we could have a few different larger but smaller districts that aren't as big as the base? If we go scenario one, and Dayton, Dundee, and Lafayette go with a different scenario one on their end?
Absolutely. I mean, there's, there's nothing precluding other districts from consolidating or forming a new district. They just have to be contiguous if they annex each other. If it's a new district, you've got more flexibility with hopscotching or doing what you need to do.
But are, are you presenting data and slides for that?
Yeah, no, we're not, we're not proposing a second district. At this point, we just did the three scenarios of a new district. And, and then we were going to go from there, see who's, who's going to be engaged, and then try to get this one going for you.
Gotcha. Second question would be back on unit utilization. I know you mentioned the 20, 25, and 30% for the medic unit. Where, where's the percentages for the engine companies or truck companies and, and things like that when they meet their threshold?
So in that slide, there's a really busy chart, and you should see every apparatus and their 2019 UHU, their 2020 UHU, and the difference. What I didn't do is I didn't draw up the 2021 because they're nowhere close to the red zone, but the ambulances are getting to and exceeding the red zone. So I pulled up the 2021 data just so you can see how it's trending. But that, that graph has every unit in it.
Yeah, no, I, I got the data of the graph. I was meaning, do engines carry different utilization thresholds in medic units? Or are they all the same?
Yeah, no, not, not really. I mean, we, we look at, I mean, it takes them a lot longer to get there. They'd have to be on a lot of fires or a whole bunch of first responding calls. The average on-scene time of an engine, or the average utilization of an engine on a medical call is usually 20 to 25 minutes, and an ambulance is anywhere from 60 to 90 minutes. So their utilization tends to be higher. But we still use the same thresholds because it, it, it inhibits their ability to hit a 90th percentile.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We are an hour and a, and 20 minutes into an evening that we have two other discussions. Any further questions anyone would have? And Chief?
I got, I got.
Oh, go ahead, Zach.
Thank you. Just, just double checking, kind of reviewing that I understood this information that I was reading and comprehending, and forgive me if you went over it, I just didn't comprehend that fast. But slide 17, you put up the resource concentration, the 14-minute effective response force. And currently, the base is what we currently offer or are providing to our area?
No, the, the base, these are all new scenarios. None of these exist today. The base scenario is if all seven jurisdictions formed a district. Scenario one is if you, McMinnville, rural, and Amity. Scenario two adds Lafayette and New Carlton to those three.
Got it. And then I recall, on the slide bef-
Not hypothetical, but reform issues.
I recall on the, the slide before that, you had the base four minutes and how we would do, and then the next one was about that 14-minute effective response rate, and we're at 40%, 57 on scenario one, and 53 on scenario two. I recall you were saying we should, on the, the other one, we should be shooting for that 75, 80%. What was the one we should be shooting for on that 14-minute effective response rate?
For the, for the 14 minutes, you would want to have, you, you still always are shooting for 90% reliability, but you would, you would like to get an effective response force on a fire 90% of the time within 14 minutes.
And so the best case you've presented us is getting us to 57.6%?
That is the case of what you have currently. Once we add bodies, it gets better. So this, that's what you have today of those three scenarios. So that's what, that's what's staffed today. So if you start adding bodies, and that's part of the discussion, we talk about which scenario and what operational enhancements do you want to add, then all of a sudden we can start putting more people in the mix, and those, those percentages are going to go up pretty significantly.
Okay.
That's, that's based on what is staffed today.
Got it.
Yes.
Thank you. Then my, my only kind of last question would be, I guess, to, to the mayor, what do we, what do you need from us? What do you, what do we do now, Mr. Mayor?
I, I think, I think where we are tonight is the, the material's been presented to us. We've had a number of partial presentations, but this is the final report. I think where we're at right now is, we'll turn it back to the chief, and we will have a further discussion a, as to, once we've had an opportunity to review this information, ask questions of the chief. He'll be back and give, we'll, we'll need to make a determination by September 15th whether we're in or we're not in, and what scenarios are our priorities. But again, the scenarios are not based on us, it's based on the total groups that would be coming in. So we just need to come up with, are we in to take it to the next level or not? Jeff, am I correct on that? Yes, Mayor. And my suggestion is that, you know, the, the council has expressed an interest in moving this project forward in the strategic plan. I don't know that we're looking for a particular affirmative action from you at this point. I think that the other partners will sort of use whatever information and whatever motivation they have to express continued interest or, you know, not interested at this point. We can loop back to the council once we've heard from those other partners and let you know what the likely option looks like, and, and the work that Sheldon and his team will be doing after that. I, I don't know that we need anything more than that. This has been on our work plan for a couple of years, and unless you tell us now you're not interested in a district, I just think we keep moving ahead until we see who the partners are, and, and then can bring back the detailed analysis of, of that sort of alignment of parties.
At, at this time, do we even have a gut check on who we think are nos of the list that are just not willing to be interested?
I mean, I'll turn to Sheldon. He's had those conversations. I think when I heard him say that Dayton was probably less likely to want to participate early on because of the, their, their apparent interest in having paid staff, and it sounds like the others are, we're still sort of who knows. Our sense, as we have worked our way through these, and it might be worth having Counselor Garvin weigh in because he's participated in some of the intergovernmental conversations, is it feels to me like Amity and Matt Earl district are probably most likely to be interested at this point, and some of the other smaller jurisdictions may be interested in a contract with this new district as opposed to moving ahead with the district right away. But again, you know, that's without the benefit of the, of the information that Sheldon's been presenting this, this week, and, and, and still has, I think, two or three jurisdictions yet to go. So I, I, I don't think anybody's out at this point, other than the West Valley Fire Departments, who clearly chose to go their own direction. But I, I defer to Sheldon about any additional sort of reading of the tea leaves that he has.
Yeah, I think, I didn't hear anybody say, get out of here, we're not interested. I heard them all say, we're going to go back and talk about it. And as you stated, sir, Dayton would want to see some staffing for them to think they could sell this. If there's no staffing in the, in it for them, they, they think it would be a hard uphill climb. But the other districts and municipalities have so far, I think, been very, they want, they want to take a close look at it.
Okay. Any last questions of Sheldon, or the chief, or of Jeff? I think we, I think we know, we're just waiting for, for other communities to let us know where we're going, and so that we can move forward. Adam, I see your hand.
I guess just to clarify with, with Jeff and with Sheldon and the chief, say we, we hear back from, you know, four or five partners that they want in, but when we as a council look at it and determine that maybe one or two of those aren't the right fit at this point in time because it could torpedo the whole district due to their current millage rate, or their current debt load, or whatever that may be, when do we have that conversation? Is that at the September 15th deadline, or is that where do we determine who our final partners are?
So, and I'll let the city manager close, but I would, I would recommend that if five or six or whoever show up and say, we want to go to the next level, let's have the meetings, and let's dictate or determine, rather, what the service levels, what the organizational structure, and what the debt realities and options are, and let us, at that point, do some quick modeling and determine what it looks like. And then if it's not sustainable, or it's not something you all think you can sell, then we need to get back together and have an open, honest conversation and, and refine it to where you think it will succeed. But I, that would be my advice. Chief?
One of the other things that we could, can do and might want to think about doing would, would be to establish an IGA for those partners that want to move forward so that we're in an agreement as we move forward on what it looks like and what the roles are and what is going to happen. We've been pretty loosey-goosey up until this point, just trying to get information out for, and it's not, I mean, it's just been the nature of the dynamic, but I think the closer we get, the tighter we get, the more, the more formal we'll want to make some of these arrangements. So that would just be my recommendation, and that might be something we bring back to council once we get to that point.
Thank you, both of you.
Counsel, Counsel President Grabkin, Remy?
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight something actually for the council that came up a number of times in the, your presentation. You said, if that's something you think you can sell. And I just wanted to call some attention to that because whatever direction the council goes, I want to make sure everybody's on the same page, that it will be our job to go out and then represent this and help foster community support in order to be successful in supporting our firefighters. Thank you.
And, and so, so true, Remy. You know, staff cannot do this, and so that's where we've talked a little bit about the creation of a pact to go out and do that. But council will need to be a, a, a strong proponent, and on the speaker tour and all of those types of things, Kelly and I have been through a number of these, and it, it's very, it, it becomes really obvious to you as you're going down that path, if you're on the right path and you're getting support as you're going out and talking to people and civic groups and those types of things, you'll get, you'll get, you'll get a good sense whether you're, you've done your homework right and people are understanding what needs to happen. Okay. Any other further questions? Very good use of time tonight. Okay. I was just reminded, we only have one other topic tonight, and that's with our Budget Committee. The session that we're having Wednesday night is going to be dealing with missing middle housing. So we now have an hour and a half to get through our, our budget and ARPA dollars. And so it is now 7:29, and I will adjourn our, our discussion as it deals with the fire district. And again, Sheldon, thank you so very much, and the, I see there've been a number of firefighters in their local on, on the call. Thank you for, you know, having the discussions prior to our discussions and, and vetting out some of the concerns that you might have. So with that now, I am going to adjourn the special session again at 7:30. We'll now go into the joint City Council and Budget Committee work session, and we'll need to do a, a roll call on that. So I'll call on Claudia to do that for us.
Committee Member Haas?
Present.
Counselor Garvin?
Here.
Committee Member Hart? Counselor Geary?
Here, and wishing I had one of Garvin's rocking chairs, man.
Committee Member Hofstadter?
Here.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Present.
Committee Member Seiler?
Here.
Counselor Peralta?
Here.
Committee Member Phoenix? Committee member Phoenix? Counselor Minky? Committee member Harmon Ferry? Council President Drapkin?
Here.
Committee member Maxfield?
Here.
And Mayor Hill?
Here. Thank you, Claudia, for doing that for us. Again, this evening, uh, we are going to have a further discussion on American Rescue Plan Investment Discussion and our, our, as a budget committee, uh, a part of our materials this evening, uh, Jennifer did a staff report that, uh, kind of summarized some of the things that we are going to be talking about and giving us a report. So I'll turn it over to Jennifer at this point to continue the discussion that's been ongoing on ARPA funds and, uh, so that we can move towards a, a, a direction that we feel comfortable with that. So Jennifer?
Great, um, good evening, everyone. So, um, I do have, um, a, you know, a few slides to help get us grounded before the discussion happens. So let me see if I can do the screen share here. Um, actually, let me, let me get it going first. That would probably be the best thing. Slideshow start. Okay, now I'll do the screen share. Okay, great. So, um, can you all see the kind of dark blue slide?
Yes, that's showing, Jennifer.
Okay, great. So, um, I actually planned out an hour's worth of time. So that does give us, um, more time for discussion if folks are, um, interested in, um, spending a, a full hour and a half on this. So the, the first item I wanted to go through is, um, just really high level, um, review of what investment options are and actually to, um, to ground you in what the next steps are first. Um, so I think that'll be helpful. And then the discussion of options among the group, um, based on the, the staff report. And then towards the end, I'd like us to spend some time just summarizing if there's any initial guidance, um, from the group for sta-, um, to give staff, uh, to pursue coming out of this meeting. So, um, that's the thinking here. So the, the next steps. So here's tonight, where we are. Um, our next meeting to talk about this subject, um, the state and local, um, fiscal recovery funds, which are our part, where our allocation comes from of the larger one point nine trillion dollar ARPA, um, act. That would be on the twelfth of October. That's the next scheduled time for this. Um, our first report, our first year's report to the Treasury Department is due just a couple of days later. So, so that's why I'm saying if there is anything coming out of today that, um, you're comfortable going ahead and, um, green lighting staff to begin working on, then, um, that way we would know whether or not we can spend any of the money ahead of the, um, the decision making in mid-October. Let's see. Then, so here's just a graphical representation, um, of the roadmap that was, um, updated and included in your packet. So, um, these are the things that you all are doing. And then the executive team and the departments and the finance department also are, you know, continuing to work, um, behind the scenes, moving things forward. So I just wanted to remind people of the eligible uses, um, of these funds. So responding to the public health emergency or the negative economic impacts. So that includes assistance to households, to businesses, to nonprofits. And you can see specifically called out impacted industries such as tourism, travel and hospitality, which certainly are relevant to our community. Um, there's also eligible uses in terms of, um, premium pay opportunities for essential workers. Um, the third area is, um, when, um, when we make the final calculation of our lost revenue in the first year, that, um, those dollars can be spent on, um, on slightly more flexible uses than the others. So there's a little bit, uh, more ability to use those funds in different ways. Um, so that's important to understand. And then, um, the, the infrastructure investments that are called out here are for water, sewer and broadband. So specifically, um, street, street and road infrastructure is not on this list. So the prohibitive uses, um, just real quick, we can't contribute to pension funds, we can't drop money into our reserves or a rainy day fund, we can't use it to make outstanding debt payment or to offset any, um, tax revenues. And it also calls out that you can't spend it out, you can't spend these dollars on infrastructure other than broadband, water and sewer. Um, but the rules do clarify that within the revenue loss category, one of the, um, city services that you could use those dollars for would include, um, the municipal street system and that sort of thing. Um, and then matching funds, you have to read the fine print. So, um, in terms of-
I have a question before you move off of that point.
Sure.
Can you, can you bond against that, that money?
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Well, I mean, I mean, if you have seven million dollars, can, can you, can you borrow against the money or can you set up a, some kind of financial instrument leveraging that do- that money?
Um, well, I mean, I guess the dollars can be leveraged to the extent that, um, they can be used with other matching programs. Um, I don't, I mean, we, we can't, we can't not spend it. So if we don't spend it, we have to give it back. So I, I don't think we can keep it like as collateral. If that's, I guess I'm, maybe I'm not quite following.
Sorry, I was having difficulty on meeting. No, I think you captured it. I was trying to see if we could use it as collateral against some other kind of financial instrument. And it sounds like if we have to spend it, we really couldn't do that.
And then Sal, the one thing that I've heard is that we cannot use it for matches on any other federal program where there's federal money. So you can't take federal money as a, as a local match for a grant or anything such as that.
So you couldn't use it, for example, for highway funds or something?
Right, we've al- we've already checked with ODOT and, and, and you, you, you can use it for highway and transportation, but you can't use it as the mandatory matching, uh, to get grants that are federally funded.
Got it, thank you.
Great, great questions. Um, so just kind of big picture considerations for your discussion tonight. So, um, if it, if it is confirmed, and I, and I have found a CPA who's willing to look at my calculations and, um, go back and validate whether, whether I've done something crazy or it's really true, truly of an enormous number. Um, if it is confirmed that the revenue loss is a large number, um, I guess I'd, I'd suggest considering how that might impact your thinking on investments in new programming. Because just because you can use it in this more flexible way for city programming, you don't have to. So just, there's that. Um, then what I mentioned before, if there are any projects or expenditure categories that have clear support from the group that you'd like staff to begin acting on, um, I think that should be part of what you're considering. Um, and then to the extent that we did spend any money on those kinds of things, um, out the door, we wouldn't be sending in a goose egg report to the Treasury Department. Although I am told that they understand people are being very deliberate in their process of deciding how to use the funds. And if we have a goose egg first year report, that is totally fine. Um, so then just the last thing is, there's no need to identify the use for the entire amount. So, um, saving an unassigned portion for the future or, you know, to use, um, you know, should X or Y conditions, um, come to pass, those kinds of conclusions are perfectly reasonable in this process. Um, so is there anything else specific, um, that people want to ask or put out there before we, um, before you begin discuss, discussing the, the options that are, that were presented in the staff report?
So let's go ahead and open it up for budget committee members and council to ask any questions of Jennifer before we have our, our discussion this evening. Please raise your hand and, and if we can take the slide down, Jennifer, we'll be able to see, I think, everyone on the screen. There we go.
Great. Sure.
So any clarifying questions before we get started?
Or Jeff, do you have any thoughts too? Um, I-
We've got, we've got Kelly first and then we'll go to Jeff.
Uh, my question may be a little premature. Uh, I can wait. I, it has to do with the asterisk on the, the list, so maybe it's too early.
Well, I, I can answer that briefly. We, um, we identified on the list by asterisks, um, types of programming that we believe there are other funding sources potentially that, um, could serve for those projects. So to the extent that that would make something more attractive to focus on or potentially lo- a lower priority relative others that don't have alternatives, um, I, I could see that going either way in your thinking.
Thank you, Jennifer, very much.
You bet.
Other questions? Okay, so what, what it shows me is Jennifer, you've done a great job of kind of outlining for us over the last, uh, couple of meetings we've had on this. So I think, uh, Jeff, uh, do you have any thoughts as we move forward in our discussions tonight from your perspective as city manager?
Um, no, no additional issues beyond what Jennifer's captured in the setup. We just would like to get some initial feedback from the council and budget committee about where they, uh, where you all see your potential priorities or interests. If there are some things on the list that, um, there's keen interest in learning more about or it feels like it's sort of a, a, a project too far and we're interested in, in taking that in, um, there, uh, we haven't really done a full-on staff assessment or prioritization. I think we are relatively comfortable that most of the things on the list are probably eligible for funding. Uh, there may be some projects that we could engage particular partners in, uh, participating, uh, and, and that work hasn't necessarily been done, although there, there's been some preliminary discussion around a couple of the projects.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, I, I know, uh, when, uh, Remy and, and myself have had leadership meetings with Jeff and we've talked about this tonight and Jennifer talked about it, this is not a race to spend the money. I think we're in a position to do this in a very calculating way, things that bring significant benefit to our community that maybe have more long-range benefits, uh, for us, given, allowing us to do some things that we couldn't do possibly, um, starting some projects. So again, uh, I think tonight just is to, to give some feedback from the budget committee and the council as to maybe some priorities if you've had a chance to think about it. Again, it's a process we're going to go through and tonight we don't have to come up with decisions. It's just another opportunity to address that transparency and have an opportunity to weigh in on, uh, on where maybe some of the funds go to. And you asked for that very specifically. So I'll go ahead and just open it up for discussion. Uh, just raise, raise your hand. Uh, Meredith?
Um, I guess one thing that seems important to me is the SLFRF Grant Administration and Compliance. Um, I don't know exactly what the, what that looks like to you. Is that, um, I don't know, someone who's part-time who works on it? Um, but it seems like it is complicated keeping track of all of it. And so it makes sense to me to have someone paid to help make sure we comply.
Well, I, I know, um, we, we would appreciate adding some capacity both to do, um, the compliance, the, um, the tracking, but also the, some of the coordinating efforts. So there are, um, I think a, a number of different kind of skillsets that, um, would really set the city up to, um, do the best possible job in terms of, um, making the best use of these funds. So I appreciate you calling that out. And if that's, if that's something that you all, um, kind of as a group think would be a, a wise use of some of the dollars, we can begin to explore how to add some of that capacity either by part-time staff or contracting, you know, a grant manager type or, um, a community, um, engagement kind of group or some, something of that, that nature.
Does that answer your question, Meredith? Okay, good. You know, um, Zach, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, I think just, I have a few things and then dovetailing to Meredith, I would, uh, the grant administrator was on my list of, uh, worthy endeavors if we want to be really efficient and, and smart and, uh, not overburden staff with spending this money. Uh, I think that's a worthwhile thing, still put me in that camp too. And then, uh, I appreciated this list of sort of pre-selected and qualified programs and wanted to just clip through, wondered if it would be helpful if I just kind of clipped through that and ones that jumped out at me that I liked. And, and then one omission from that list that I think we should look at and then would love to hear what other people are thinking. But, um, on that, that matched my list was Parks, uh, and Outdoor Spaces Master Plan. I think that would be a great use, uh, of these funds and to get started on that as we tail off of MacPac, I think Parks and Rec hopefully should be, uh, well poised to take on that effort and, and lead and run that. We can move that up from that, uh, planning's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, uh, timeline, I think they presented recently up to hopefully sooner. I think that'd be a great opportunity, uh, that, uh, the climate, a climate action plan, which I noticed wasn't on the list, but I think that would be a good thing to do is I know there was some, uh, Wildland and Urban Interface and to deal with fires and, and management. I think a climate action plan would kind of be in line with that as we, uh, heard from earlier in this year. Uh, I still think that's an important endeavor to do. I think the Third Street, uh, Streetscape Improvement Plan project that was on the list was good. Um, others would be mental health support, the library e-resources, um, Parks and Rec Van was on there and Parks Maintenance Full Restoration, I think was an interesting one, um, that I'd like to explore and see if we can do that through this as well as the ambulance and the grant administrators as I listed. So that, 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 those were the ones that jumped out at me.
Okay, Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, in partial response to, uh, Meredith's question, uh, yes, uh, the capacity, um, that we currently have will be stretched, um, to deal with the compliance aspects of spending these funds for sure. And as we sort of refine our focus on a list of potential projects that are higher priority, um, there's the likelihood that, um, some additional project management capacity to help move those individual projects forward, uh, would be important as well. So I think it's not just about the, sort of the compliance and reporting piece, but actually effectively spending the money and making sure we've got the capacity to, to manage the projects that we ultimately select make, make a lot of sense.
Uh, Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as I looked through the, there were a couple of them that kind of struck at my heart. Uh, probably one of the most important ones to me was the fact, uh, the evaluate the feasibility of community centers, the housing or mixed-use projects supporting transitional housing. This, uh, is kind of a part of the navigation center. This would be the opportunity to use it. Uh, one point five million doesn't go very far when you're trying to put together a navigation center. But, uh, I'm thinking if we could add some- But, uh, I'm thinking if we could add some funds to that, it might, um, certainly move that project along and it's desperately needed. And it would work in tandem with the Turnkey Project that Providence and YCAP are putting together with the, uh, Motel Six.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll, uh, I'll just chime into that a little bit. I, I think, you know, from a navigation stand, a navigation stand, the center standpoint, we've got a lot of work. You know, we know we've got 1.5, but we don't know where to go. But as we turn that over to a committee, which I'm guessing part of that could fall within the Affordable Housing Committee. Uh, and, and we get a direction, then understanding what the needs might be to get that to the next level. And then also making just sure that, uh, there aren't additional available funds. Cause we do know that many of the projects that, uh, the, that went legislative are not going to be funded. So there could be some monies out there, i.e. some of the stuff that Ron Noble was going to wanting to help us with, with Third Street and the Navigation Center. So again, I think, I take that back to what Jeff has said. We've got to be strategic and don't jump on these things too early, not making sure that we get the availabilities that are out there. We utilize those first before we come at. So go ahead, Kelly.
And I agree with you. Obviously this isn't something we want to do immediately, but I, I do think we ought to keep it in the back of our minds. I remember testifying for 3.5 million additional to go with the Navigation Center. I, I suspect we obviously didn't get it. But, uh, I am hoping that there will be more funds down the road. It's just really important to do this.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Chris.
Just a quick question. Um, and, and maybe I'm, I'm not, I may be out of line in asking this, but it seems like there's already been several that are voicing interest in the SLFR, SLFRF Grant Administration and Compliance. And that seems like in a way kind of a, having somebody to help administer this is almost a no-brainer. Do we want to just knock that out of the park and get that one off the plate and, and, and go off on some of these other wish lists? Just, just as a thought.
A good point, Chris. And I'll tell you, back when we were putting our urban renewal, um, efforts to, together, we, we knew that at a certain point, we may need to even have someone help administrate those funds as we were going to over the 20-year, a 30 million lift in the urban, uh, the, the urban renewal dollars for the downtown area. So, uh, again, I, I think it's wise to know when you've got monies and you need some expertise to help because it just puts too much of a burden on, on departments that are already stretched to the max. Uh, Kelly?
Uh, okay. I, I did want, one that really hit me was the, uh, need for legal file systems and such and I, I was really hoping that included, uh, Westlaw or whatever Amanda needed for her legal work. So, uh, I, I did want to bring that one up. I just thought, oh, this woman needs this information. If we could give that one some serious consideration. There, there are so many good projects on here, but I do remember Sal bringing that up in a conversation and I thought, my gosh.
Counselor Minky, I'll just clarify, um, that is not, um, inclusive of the Westlaw, um, subscription. That is paid for through our current budget. Um, that was approved. It's a, a record-keeping system and also a tracking system to make sure that we know what's going on as far as contracts and insurance and those kind of things. And also a really good way when you have one client to make sure that you're keeping really good records of all the projects that the client is, is, uh, doing. So a lot of jurisdiction in particular use it rather than law firms. Um, it's specifically designed for either in-house counsel or for government entities.
I just, as a point, uh, would this also be used for rental agreements out at the airport? Because we seem to have a hard time sometimes remembering the dates when those things don't expire or whatever.
Yep, you got it. Exactly.
Yes, I've been wanting one of those for, I think, 17 years now.
Adam?
Yeah, lots of great comments tonight from everybody. Um, and I share a lot of the same thoughts. Another couple of things that I haven't heard that I would like to knock out because I think they're probably cheaper on the spectrum and they would also reduce, have the potential to reduce the expense side of the, the P and L. Would be like the timekeeping system and paperless court operation. Anything that we can do to lower expenses long-term going forward, I'd be in favor of. Obviously the Parks Master Plan is something that I'm passionate about as well as that van and mobile rec trailer to increase service levels for the citizens. And the electric vehicle for the home delivery of the library, if that was, you know, proved to be a, a cost savings in the long run because we're not buying fuel and we're not maintaining a combustible engine. I would also be in favor of that, that I haven't, uh, I haven't heard much feedback on that yet tonight. Airport manager funding, we've obviously heard a lot about that over the years and with Mike gone and, and how that's gonna transpire. I, I think, uh, probably keeping an eye on that depending on who his replacement is and what airport. I guess management experience they have, for lack of a better term, uh, would be, would be something I'd be interested in. Any of the master planning, uh, like Third Street Improvement or just the master planning in general, I'm in favor of, but I would really like to focus these dollars first on things that lower expenses and increase uh, service levels, uh, within our current system. First, before we get into more master planning, which is going to take more money to that master planning.
Thank you, Adam. Let's go up to Sal.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I echo a lot of, uh, Adam and Zach's comments, uh, in, in terms of, uh, trying to reduce long-term costs through these dollars. And, uh, I, I would like however to point out, and I think Adam also mentioned the Parks Open Space and Natural Area Master Plan. I think I, I'd like to put my thumb on that as well. In addition, um, there were two line items, one for, uh, Wildland Urban Interface and one for Stormwater Capacity. And I really feel that those two plus the parks, um, could actually dovetail on one another since a lot of the restoration that would occur, you know, would be on city properties and could, could relate to, um, you know, outdoor spaces that would be more usable. And so I'd kind of like to encourage people to think about these one-time dollars as an opportunity to, to, to create something interesting with our open spaces and parks. You know, just because that, that is something that I get the most feedback from citizens, particularly in this time of COVID when, um, internal facilities are, you know, maybe not utilized or not as consistently utilized. We can still use the outdoors. So, uh, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Sal. Let's go to, uh, Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I have to say, I, the, I think the asterisks are, are well-placed here. Uh, and if we're, as we run down this list, I just, I, I, I don't want to be redundant of what other counselors have said. I do, um, want to just highlight a couple of things that I think are important. For one, starting at the top of the list here is this mental health support. And the reason I want to take an extra moment to acknowledge that is because I, I believe that's how we would, um, access funding for doing something like the Kahoots Program, which we heard about the other night. And, um, and then the other reason for that is not only because we know that demand is out there, but because of the stress relief on other departments, not just on the Police Department, also on, uh, Fire Department. And, you know, EMS calls for, uh, that, um, uh, demands on our, on our Parks Department that, um, are a result of that, that, that kind of fold into some more long-term, um, questions, um, in the community. Hearing a lot of questions right now about bathrooms, for instance. And so without kind of getting off track, there are things that ultimately fall on Parks Department. And I think that there's a great sweeping, uh, benefit that is the, um, financially responsible, uh, thing to do when it, when it comes to highlighting mental health support. Um, and then I, uh, and then generally following the asterisks, um, I, I will call out also the, uh, broadband-related investments. And, and the reason I want to take an extra moment to, to call that out is because we've heard so clearly from our school district, um, that, uh, kids that didn't have that access. I mean, we, we understand, I think, I think everybody in this room understands that there's a general equity issue when it comes to internet access and therefore access to education. But we saw, uh, and have heard reports of, of very real effects within our own school district. When kids simply fell off the radar, radar and a lot of that was not having internet access. So I think the, the health of our community, uh, having, um, the most educated, uh, public that we can possibly have. And right now with so much education happening through, uh, internet, um, that, that it's, it's really vital. And I, and I will say that, um, at my first goal-setting meeting, um, I brought that up as something that should be, that, that should be considered by the McMinnville City Council because of the equity. And if we really want to create a culture of inclusion, we need to think about what systems we have in place that are, whether or not intended currently excluding people. So I'll, I'll, I'll be quiet for now. Thank you for some time.
Great. And just, just piggybacking off of some of those comments, Remy. I, again, I think we've got to be cognizant of, you know, the, the, the program that Comcast have for, um, education that can deliver, uh, internet at a very low cost. I think it's, uh, if not free, $10 a month for kids in school. So we, we need to make sure that we're, we're taking advantage of all the other types of things that we have available in that area. And that doesn't, that doesn't go for specifically broadband, but it goes for a number of the other areas that we have on the list. Let's go to Chris next and then Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, I just want to verify that the asterisks indicate there may be other places where we can get funding for those particular projects, correct? Okay. So I guess if, if we're not going to just nail off the one that I think is pretty obvious that we need to do, I'll go through the, the wish list that I have and looking at these, um, and taking into account kind of what the mayor set the table with, which is thinking long-term on things that are going to bring a great, uh, return back to our community. There's one that nobody's mentioned yet that I think probably deserves some consideration. And I think we'll probably hear more about it going forward. I know it's going to be in my, uh, next, um, uh, meeting, um, when I'm, when I'm coming back to council with the different meetings that I'm a part of. And that is, you know, Scott Cooper had this idea of, uh, a technology sector out by the airport. And it really does have the potential of bringing in a lot of, uh, business and high-wage jobs and economic development into our community. Um, and it's probably one of the areas that, that is going to have the greatest impact over the long haul in that, in, in terms of jobs into our community. In order to get there, we need to set the table, um, so to speak, for other funding partners to come in and help make that happen. And one of the, one of the items on this is, uh, a, funding for a feasibility study out there. So I'd put a big plug in for that. I think, I think that it's, it's kind of like the golden goose down the road financially of what's going to help bring income into the city. I also think that we, um, I, I think we need to really consider the ambulance item on here. I think we have heard, even through the presentation, that we just heard now that they're overstaffed. Or not overstaffed, over, overstressed rather, don't have enough equipment. And so I think we need, we need to really consider that. I know the equipment's running old. Um, I think now is a good time to take advantage of that. I echo a lot of the other thoughts that have already been said. You know, the, the small projects that would help us be a much, much more efficient in the long run, as Adam has mentioned. I think those are great projects. Um, um, I do like, um, do think we need to be considering, I was reading through here, of course, I'm an IT guy. So I'm noticing some requests regarding, um, IT that needs to be taken care of and that's due by 2022, 2023. Uh, firewall VPN systems. Um, I, I do think that should be near the top because that's going to protect our infrastructure going forward, our technology infrastructure. And I think that probably I, I, in, in listening to, uh, the conversation regarding, the area master plans, I noticed that asterisk. I would, I would like us to consider when it comes to those asterisk items that we at least hold off and see where we can get other funding into those positions from other sources to help bring the cost down. I do think we really do need a Parks Open Spaces and Natural Area Master Plan being done. But I, I do think if we have an opportunity to bring funds from the other way, that we, we talked at the beginning, we want to make sure that we are slow and deliberate on spending this money. And that's one good reason to be is if we have another source to get funds from. I think that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Chris. I think I'm going to jump in because everyone's had an opportunity and then we'll, we'll go, uh, with Adam, Zach and Remy. But, um, from my perspective, I agree with Chris on that Innovations, that Innovation Center. I think we're going to be, uh, receiving a request from the McMinnville Economic Vitality Group that talk exactly what Chris was talking about. They've met, uh, they've met in a subgroup and then they're going to meet in their full group. And so I think a request is going to come with a lot more detailed information and the economic lift that supporting that, at least the feasibility study would be, uh, appropriate. MURAC, I think, is going to come before the council with a recommendation on the Third Street Improvement Project. Utilizing, uh, some dollars to help augment some of the urban, uh, urban renewal dollars that we would have there. Uh, one, one area that I think we are sorely behind in, and that is emergency preparedness. And I don't know how much we'd put there, but just to even come up with an updated plan so that in a case of emergency, we could, you know, we're, we're more prepared in that arena. And then the last thing that I would have is, is, you know, uh, last council meeting, the Newburgh Dundee Bypass Committee came and we know at some point that we're going to have to participate in a local match to get phases two and three moving forward. And, um, if there's some dollars because that has a long-term impact, and it would be monies that, uh, could help us get to a point where we could put the full bypass in. And when we do that, then there's so much economic value to, uh, our economy, uh, getting products to market, tourism, travel. It makes all of those things much easier. So I just throw that out because it's not on the list, but it was something that was just brought up last, uh, last Tuesday. Okay, with that being said, I'll go over to Adam. We'll do Zach, Remy and Allison in that order. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to expand on, or hopefully expand on that ambulance a little bit. Chris brought it up, but I was wondering if, uh, Chief was still in the building or if maybe Jennifer or Jeff could elaborate some additional context, i.e. like what we're currently spending for maintenance on, whatever ambulance that talks about replacing, just kind of what our burn rate is annually on a worn-out piece of apparatus for buying a new one and how that would lower our expenses going down and forward as well as if, uh, that current ambulance that we're thinking about replacing has any value of being a, an in-town medic that just wouldn't be taking out-of-town transfers if we're looking to put a, another medic in the system to lower that utilization rate we just heard about in the last presentation.
Counselor Garvin, uh, currently we had, uh, we had three reserve ambulances in the fleet, two of them, um, all, all three of the reserve ambulances that were in the fleet were the ones that we purchased from Portland, um, about six years ago that were, 10 years old at the time we purchased them. These, two of these, uh, fleet ambulances have had engines, um, go bad in the last several months. So those two will be rotating out and we'll be getting rid of those on the auction block. We'll probably get a couple thousand dollars for each of those two. That puts us down to one reserve ambulance. Um, this will be a, a new ambulance replacing an existing ambulance. an existing ambulance that will, one of the ones that is over 200,000 miles, that will move into the reserve capacity. Right now, we're currently spending, but we have currently budgeted about $65,000 annually on fleet maintenance for ambulances. We're running, our Medic 12 unit puts close to $60,000, $60,000, $60,000 miles a year on that unit. The other units are putting close to 50,000 miles a year on the units. We have switched from diesel units to gas units. We anticipate a gas motor change at 100,000 miles on each of the units to get 200,000 miles out of the units. That has been the model that we've used since they stopped putting diesels in the van chassis. The van chassis are less expensive to run around in than the large truck chassis and four-wheel drives, so we get better fuel mileage out of them. But without the diesel motors, we have to replace a motor once every, once every 100,000 miles, roughly. That's a rough guess, but we've had, the new gases, we had, we had one last 125, and we had the other one go out at 100. So, but the cost of replacing the motor at that timeframe puts us still less expensive than the diesel motors in those apparatus. We've had, we've had to, we've had to, due to budget constraints, the last, this year and last year, they were budgeted items, but we've had to slide them in our procurement process because of some of the budget cutbacks that we've had.
So I'm hearing about $65,000 a year to maintain all the medic fleet. What's the savings of just replacing that, that one? Is that 200,000-mile diesel motors, you know, probably 20 grand to replace, or what's your guess on that?
So what we're, what we're actually, what we're really doing, Counselor Garvin, is just, if we get the new one, we will go back to two reserves in the fleet. That 200,000-mile ambulance will still stay in the system because we have more than one ambulance breakdown at a time. This will put us in a position where we'll have two reserves, and we won't have to brown out an ambulance due to maintenance repairs, in keeping our current service levels where they need to be.
Okay. And that 250, is that a full new ambulance, or is that just a remount of the medic box on a new cabin chassis?
That would be a full new ambulance. At this point in time, the remount, what we can get is the extra ambulance in the system. The remount's a good plan, and we used that plan the last time, but because we have to add an additional ambulance to the system due to the two that are going out that cannot be remounted, we can't do a remount on this one.
Okay. Thanks for the additional context, and that would definitely be something that I would support as a deeper, more, more efficient use of our dollars going forward, just like the digitalization of the court system and the timekeeping records. Anything on this list that we can become more efficient as an organization and lower our burn rate as far as expenses going out, I'm in favor of. Thank you.
Zach, I think the mayor called on you, but he's muted right now.
I'll jump in then, thanks. Okay. The more, a couple things. One is, you know, Remy had brought up two things, and one was on my list, and one should have been on my list, but the mental health projects and then broadband infrastructure projects aren't, seem to me are noble and worthwhile endeavors. I'd like to chase those down. Those, for me, fall in the category of, you know, need more definition, and I'm wondering if there's other ones that would, I mean, I get, we just heard a long, beautiful presentation from Kahoots, and if you could just say, "Do that," I would push that button and make it a success. But I think, I don't know if there's other ones or others that would like, "Yeah, I'd like to chase that down or learn more about chasing that down." And if things like, "What does a broadband infrastructure program look like for the city of McMinnville?" And I know that could also say, "Well, they had an asterisk next to it," so depends on how much money we get, and it's a bunch of different avenues. But I think for me, infrastructure, broadband infrastructure is a worthwhile endeavor enough to, I'd like to see more information. And if it's, if we can significantly boost the lowest portions and get them access where they didn't have access before, that's a great use to the money at a local level. So I think there's, those two jump out to me as ones that are like, "I'd like more information on that for McMinnville." The other one is, I don't know, you know, we've heard some good discussion about what people like from this list and want to endeavor, but we've also heard about timing and whether we submit a goose egg for the first one or not. I think two things is, one, I still like the idea of that grant administration, but I'm wondering if we submit something that's zero now, is that something we want to bring about or move on now, or do we want to do that when we submit something for a request? That'd be a question for Jeff. I don't know. The timing of when we would bring that person on would be when we would submit requests for funding, or onboard them now and assume we're going to get funding sooner rather than later.
Go ahead, Jeff. So I think we would probably take a sooner rather than later approach on that because being part of what you're talking about and we're hearing from other counselors, there's a lot of interest in more information about a lot of things on this list, and you're tapping the same people to do that work as you are to do everything else right now. I think one of the next steps that Jennifer and I would like to talk about is to, is to scope out the kind of work that sort of a project manager, grant administration person could do along the lines of fleshing out more of these projects. I mean, what we're going to try to do is to take the input in the areas where we've heard multiple people say, "Yeah, I think I'm kind of interested in this, but need to know more," because we need to figure out that more piece. We need to do a more of a, I mean, these are concept right now. They don't really constitute project plans or have any sort of order of magnitude of investment for the most part, and I think we need to spend some time doing that. And I frankly think that, that grant administration, project manager kind of person would be a really important resource to bring on sooner rather than later, not just because of the spending of this $7.7 million over the arc of the next four to six years, but there's a significant chance that some of these projects could leverage future infrastructure package dollars or future ARPA dollars if there's an ARPA two, and building that capacity into the organization to be more responsive to federal and other partners, you know, how to knit those projects, how to knit those dollars together to fund regional and multiple partner projects is something that I think we're going to be doing for several years in a row now. And I just, we could make a compelling case for that.
That makes sense, and I like, I like onboarding that capacity to help us do all of this. I think that one of the things I'm taking away is everyone's got good, exciting ideas for it, so the sooner the better then, and I would support that. I would, on one of the items you said, I would say there are a bunch of those items that are, need more information, want to understand. And then there's pretty straightforward things like buy ambulance. You know, I know you'd go out there with your shopping cart and fit an ambulance in it, but, so yeah, that makes sense. And on the subject of those that are sort of more maybe packaged and ready to go, that we've done, things we've done before, or things that are fairly routine, I've heard three or four counselors now and members talk about that parks and rec and open space master plan, and it's even in our packet that as the project can be managed and move forward with capacity of likely pausing that MACPAC work and moving forward on that. And I'm just wondering, at what point do we feel like that or any of the other ones have bubbled up enough during this discussion that we can actually move those forward with, you know, if we need to get a proposal for what that cost would be, or if there's any others that have bubbled up that high amongst, a high number of people, if we can move those things forward tonight?
We're definitely taking copious notes to try to keep track of all that stuff.
Excellent. Mr. Mayor, unless you have anything to add to that answer, you can call on Council President Remy.
Let's go over to Council President Drapkin. Remy?
Thank you. So I think on moving forward with somebody to help administer and understand this, I think I'm very comfortable with doing that as a first step. I would want to see that job or project description, though, first, just because, you know, we have this potentially a quite large expenditure depending on the scope of that position. So I'd want to have a better idea of what the recommendation is and specifically what we're hiring for. I agree with Counselor Chen with that the funding in the innovation centers is wise. However, I do think that we have, I think there are two, at least two other things on this list that would need more attention before we'd be ready to do that, which is that, one, is the airport master plan. And for anybody that was here long enough to remember when Hewlett-Packard had a huge facility here that employed many people and had great paying jobs, you will remember that they left McMinnville because of a lack of global access. And any innovation center is going to be looking at those same points. And that access is not only going to mean a physical access for when people want to fly in for meetings, et cetera, but it will also expand into that conversation regarding internet access. And we will want to make sure that there is a good and consistent, secure internet access that's generally available here. That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Let's go over to Allison.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and Budget Committee members. I just was getting slightly confused. I wondered if there was any desire to eliminate things we're not interested in, simply because I've heard everybody on the council mention almost all of the things on the list at some point. So that was, that was a question. I mean, if, while I have your time, I would say that personally, I think, having heard some impassioned pleas from members of the McMinnville general public ever since the beginning of the budget process, I'd be somewhat interested in making sure, you know, some of the things that the general public can see very visibly are addressed in, with the money. Things like the park restoration perhaps, or I certainly am in favor of the ambulance. I love the Kahoots presentation and the mental health and the transitional housing. So I do think that while some of the internal things are very important, some of the money has to be spent in a way that the general public can visually see that. That was about all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. And we have Meredith, we have Sal, and we have Chris, but we have Amanda's hand up, and so I'm going to call on our attorney just to see if she's clarifying something. Go ahead, Amanda.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Hill. And Jeff touched on this briefly, but I just want to clarify, in this work session, the Budget Committee and the council can't make a decision about funding right now. If there are things that there's a general consensus to explore first, or, you know, get more information about, or things that you're not interested in us looking at, that is perfectly okay. But no decisions can be made on specific, funding-specific projects at this time.
Thank you for reminding us that. Sometimes emotionally, we get ahead of what we legally can do, correct? Thanks. Okay, we'll go up to Meredith, then. Go ahead, Meredith.
Okay, first, I needed a clarification. So for the ARPA funds, my understanding is there were like, you know, Jennifer went over, you went over a few specific things that we can spend the money on, like public health or the negative economic impact of COVID. So when I'm looking at this list of great things that I think we should spend our money on, are these mostly, can we justify spending our money on them because, under the revenue recovery part of ARPA? Does that make sense? Because like, one of them was like essential worker pay, like none of these relate to that per se. So I guess my question's for Jennifer. How, you know, how, where do we put website under the uses of ARPA funds?
I would say that everything on this list, except for, there were a couple of items that were added at the, the day before I put this out, that I don't know we can draw a line, and that's the general building repairs and the general fleet upgrades. Those things, I think, can come in under the revenue recovery. But barring those two items, I believe we can create a justifiable line between one of the allowable uses outside of the revenue recovery portion of it. And that's, that's my impression from looking at and hearing what other communities are, are moving forward. And you did bring up a point, we do not, we discussed briefly the premium pay kinds of things, and just that wasn't something that was clear to us, that it would be easy for us to do or feasible. So I don't, I don't know, Jeff, if you want to weigh in on that one in particular, but you're right. We did not come up with a, with a project proposal for that very specific thing that is called out as eligible.
All right. It's okay. I don't need a clarification on that. That was just an example of how, of something I didn't see in this list. So I guess if someone else wants more information about that, we can go into that. But I guess, Jeff, did you want to say something?
I think it would be awesome if we didn't have to talk about that particular project anymore for a bunch of reasons. In addition to the revenue recovery component, there is another nuance that we haven't really talked about in the law that makes it a little bit easier to spend the ARPA funds, and that's when we're dealing with projects in what we're called a qualified census tract. And those are essentially census tract where there's a significant enough portion of people at a certain income level that the federal government has basically said, de facto, people in these income classes have been more disproportionately impacted by the pandemic than others. And so there are fewer kind of hurdles in your way to spend money on certain projects. You know, just as an example, not advocating, but the conversation around the innovation center at the airport, that happens to be one of those qualified census tracts. So it's going to be a little bit easier to spend money there than it might be if the innovation center were in a very high-income part of town, for instance. And those are the kind of additional details that we would bring together to sort of build a more robust project description on the things that we're hearing some interest about.
Another comment that I had is, I am in favor of the mental health. I mean, that was a little vague. My one worry about it is that it seemed like it would be an ongoing thing, and so to use one-time money worries me because we would need, it would need to be added to the budget somehow if it needed to, if we needed to continue to pay for this mental health professional. And so I'm a huge fan of that, but I don't, I worry about using ARPA funds for it unless we need to somehow kick off the programs. I don't know. I missed the Kahoots. I don't know if they talked about that. And then I also, I'm a big fan of the financial and performance data transparency application. It seems like that could help us with some efficiencies, as people have mentioned is important to us. So that's all I need to say right now.
Thank you, Meredith. Let's go over to Chris next. Just Mayor, in real quick response to that last comment by Meredith, I can add a little bit. So yes, these are one-time funds. We're, while we have several years to spend them, we're going to be really hesitant to invest money in ongoing endeavors unless we can show where the future operations could come from. Just as a hypothetical example on how ARPA funds could assist with the mental health support program, for instance, one of the things that Kahoots didn't talk about was they need vans for their teams. And I know that one of the things that Eugene originally spent money on was buying vans for Whitebird. So they were making essentially capital investments in the program because the program couldn't operate without wheels under the teams. And so you could potentially use ARPA funds to buy a fleet of vans to support a mental health assistance program, and you'd still have to figure out all the rest of the, how it worked and who paid for it and who provided the service. So ARPA could support, you know, in kicking off the program and making some one-time expenses, but wouldn't necessarily be incurring the sort of ongoing operational costs. Thank you, Jeff. And, you know, Kahoots also talked a little bit about having a structure, was it called a detention center, that was critical to that program? I don't have my notes with me. It was actually, there was a sobering center. That was. So, yeah, the sobering, yes. And so they said that was one of the critical elements for any program to get. And so they said that was one of the critical elements for any program to get off the ground. So vehicles and that center, okay. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to answer Council President's observations and I appreciate, excuse me, appreciate them. That's the entire ask on the Innovation Center is to provide a feasibility analysis. We have, it's exactly what we're after, is making sure that this can be done, which also sets the table for future development and investment. We have three landowners, I hate to jump the gun on this because there's going to be a presentation that's going to get into details of this, but three large landowners out there that have already come together that can, that are willing to go into this process. And so kind of now is the time. It just happened to time perfectly with the ARPA dollars coming in. So the ask is specifically to do a feasibility study to make sure it can be done. And I would agree with you, I'm interested in hearing about what the broadband component actually means in McMinnville. It may be, these actually go hand in hand, because one of the things that has to happen out there is broadband development. So I'd be very interested to see what that entails in more details. Thank you.
And then Chris, just to piggyback off on that, you know, we know that the feasibility study just helps us market the property to get private investors, because that's going to be a private investor involvement out there.
Is it privately owned project? It's not, I mean, you're asking basically for public dollars to do a feasibility study to finance for a private project, right?
The, just, I'll take some of the pressure off Chris for jumping the gun. It's really about, it's really about planning the infrastructure. I mean, that's the feasibility stuff, is the public infrastructure that would need to be in place to support an innovation center, including the connection with the airport and how the airport plays a role in that innovation center. It's not about, it's not about doing the development.
So it's a study on the infrastructure that's needed, not on the feasibility of whether or not people will come and use the thing or whatever.
Correct.
Thanks.
And it goes hand in hand, I think, with our Three Mile Lane project out there. We're just, we're doing a lot, we've got a lot of grant money that we put in, but it all comes together. And we've got, we've got individuals out there that would love to see innovation happening, or not innovation, but having development out there that would be an economic driver for this community in the long run.
Well, it's kind of like, you know, the Third Street Downtown Improvement Project that's going to be brought before us as well. It's, we've got to lay the foundation for potential investment from other sources, whether it be Third Street, for the Third Street Development, it's an infrastructure money that we hopefully can get our hands on, and there it's going to be other development. And remember that the Innovation Center was part of our MAC Town 2032 Economic Development Strategic Plan. So this is something that we've already kind of agreed is a direction we want to head.
Well, and to your point, Sal, you know, we've had, we've had studies out in that property, but it was in a different direction. It was, you know, whether it could handle like a Costco and a Target and some of those types of things, and we're looking at a different direction today.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I, if I can just make one.
Sure.
Comment. Just in general, you know, I think one of the other Budget Committee members sort of made reference to this, that we all have big wish lists. Seven million dollars does not really stretch as far as we think it will. And so I would just say that at the end of this, I hope we're just going to narrow down to, you know, I mean, if there's a few low dollar ticket items that we take on, but I'd really like to see us focus this money in a way that can be transformative rather than furthering it out across multiple projects. And in general, to that point, you know, I'm really supportive of the Newburgh Dundee bypass and getting that to completion, but I really think that we have so many other immediate pressing needs within our geographic boundaries of the city of McMinnville that I would be very hard pressed to justify, you know, putting anywhere near the kind of dollars that were, seem to be suggested towards that particular project. And in general, you know, I just think we should be thinking about paring back to some of the, to meet some of the core needs that we have as a city. So if that's, you know, encouraging business development out by the airport or, you know, promoting some of these plans, I think that's fine, but I do think it needs to be very focused. Thanks.
Thank you. Allison?
Yes, sorry, I was just going to, I was inspired by what Counselor Peralta just said. It seems to me that the ADA Transition Plan is a low budget dollar amount, and since it represents 18% of the population, if I'm reading that correctly, that would seem to be something that could be supported and make a difference.
Thank you, Allison. Okay. Any other discussion items? As Jeff indicated, Jennifer and Jeff are taking notes and trying to gather our thoughts. Chris?
Yeah, one thing, Mr. Mayor, that I was going to mention and I didn't, is Sal Peralta mentioned, or Counselor Peralta mentioned in a previous meeting, and I really do not remember what he said, I just remember thinking it was a great idea. And he had mentioned a way of paring down all, we had a list of other items we were looking at, and he came up with a way to pare those down. And I wondered if maybe we could consider, I mean, obviously, we can't make any, I'm totally lost a bunch of my inspiration thanks to Amanda. And so, so going, sorry, Amanda, I had to say that, I've been waiting for that opportunity. So I'm wondering if perhaps we could revisit that. Counselor Peralta, do you have any recollection of what I'm referring to? Did I lose you?
Yeah, I think you're, I think you're referring to just the approval survey where you just give people a list of choices and let them pick all the ones they agree with, and the ones that bubble up are mathematically the most likely to have the broadest support. And I actually, I actually sent a more detailed description of that to staff much later after the fact, just in case they could use it for future reference, so.
And I do realize that we're going to have some presentations going forward as everybody wants to come before us to share their vision of how best we can spend this money. I, and so we're going to, some of this is subject to change, but I just wonder if perhaps something in that nature might be a way to help us through this process.
Point well taken. Okay. Any other comments?
I have one comment, which is that I just want to say to our staff, Jennifer and Jeff and et cetera, how much I really appreciate the time that you've put into kind of helping us work through these expenditures and the additional time that you put in this year and kind of helping us work through and shape the budget. I just, as a policymaker, I really appreciate the opportunity to give that kind of feedback. And I do feel that you are doing a very good job of taking that feedback and trying to distill it into a workable action plan. So just want to give that positive feedback because, you know, we don't always get that. So thanks again.
Thank you, Sal, for doing that and saying that. I will also, the few Budget Committee members that are on the line, I think that we've gotten typically five years of work out of you in six months. Okay, so you asked for it, you got it, and you've come to the table. So congratulations for being here. I know there's been many one-on-ones with Jennifer and members of the Budget Committee, and the consistency of you being here is, speaks volumes to your desire to be more a part of this process. Jeff, your hands up?
So thanks, Mayor. Counselor Peralta, thanks for the kind comments, and I saw several other folks doing the emoji thumbs up and other things, we appreciate it. I will tell you that while this is hard work, I find it really energizing. This really does provide us the opportunity to pick a handful of things that can really have significant positive impact on this community in a variety of ways. I think I'll let Jennifer sort of walk us through the next steps as she sees it, but just a reminder that we will be distilling what we heard, and I think there were a number of projects that got pretty significant consensus from the group. I didn't hear anybody say, I hate this, this is a terrible idea, but there were some particular projects that didn't really get mentioned. We'll probably just leave those on the list, and I think that our initial effort will be to try to flesh out some of the things that we heard that were either sort of related to specifically how we administer the funds, how we can have an immediate impact on sort of ongoing operational expenses, things that might be fairly quick wins, if you will. And then some of the bigger, sort of gnarlier projects that folks are intrigued by will be, will be building some more kind of robust project descriptions and pulling together more information. We've got several weeks to do that. We plan to be back to you in mid-October for some decision points, although we may bring to you the concept of admin and compliance in advance of that, given sort of the focused support we heard from most folks about that particular issue. And with that sort of high-level stuff, I'll thank Jennifer for her time and turn it over to her for any sort of closing wrap-up or questions that she may have that we need to continue to talk about.
Thank you, Jeff. So we'll go over to Jennifer.
Okay, great. I mean, this has been, thank you so much for the time that you all clearly put into kind of reviewing these lists and seeing what really motivated you and seemed appealing for the community. And so I do, I do think because, and I'll coordinate with Amanda as well, but because we did budget this, I think we can begin to move things forward. So there may be an iterative step where we take some of the things that were clear, like Jeff just mentioned, you know, bringing on some support to make this, you know, the best process possible. I think the Park Master Plan seemed to be mentioned a lot. I think there might have been a handful of other things that we could bring forward interim without having to wait two months for the October decision-making. So Jeff and I have our one-on-one tomorrow, and we'll flesh out kind of a proposal back, how to get, continue to get feedback across the Budget Committee, as well as move some things forward that seem to clearly have strong support and be, you know, budgetarily within our ability to fund. So I think that's kind of all I'm thinking at this stage. Any other, I don't know, Mayor Hill or Council President?
Any comments? Again, I think we've just, you know, as a group, I'm very proud of our approach, and there's still heavy lifting going, you know, but this, I think these discussions are going to help us as we even work on the budget moving forward too. I think all of these activities are, are helping, bringing the group together and giving us a much greater vision of who and what we need to be doing, whether it's ARPA dollars or it's revenue, it's expenditures, it's all those things. We're in the midst of many things. So with that being said, everyone, thank you for your time this evening. I will now adjourn the specially called joint session of the City Council Budget Committee. It is 8:45. Thanks, everyone.